I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the City of Emeryville Planning Commission Meeting. It's Thursday, September 27, 2012. Could we please get the roll call?
Commissioner Donaldson.
Here.
Commissioner Moss.
Here.
Commissioner Sherman.
Here.
Commissioner Steinberg has an excused absence this evening. Commissioner Tan.
Here.
Vice Chair Cardoza.
Here.
Chair Coomerly.
Here.
We have a quorum of seven, of six commissioners.
Please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'd like to open a public comment for any item that is not on the agenda. Do we have anyone wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, go to the action recap.
I need to abstain because I wasn't here last time.
Guess I will as well.
I would move approval.
I'll second.
So, excuse me, that was Donaldson and Cardoza? Is that right? And is that without objection?
With one abstention.
Well, two abstentions, yes. So, actually, we, and one absence, so we have four eyes, I guess. Six, no, okay. All right.
Okay, on to the director's report, please.
All right. I'd like to let you know about what the city council has done since your last meeting. Your last meeting was in August, and they have had one meeting since then, on September 4th. Their September 18th meeting was canceled for Rosh Hashanah. On September 4th, the council approved a contract with Kim Lee Horn to design pedestrian improvements on San Pablo Avenue at 43rd, 45th, and 47th Streets, which will be funded by a $748,000 Safe Roots to School grant from Caltrans. They also approved a request for qualifications and proposals for the design and development of an affordable rental housing development at 3706 San Pablo Avenue and 1025 West MacArthur Boulevard. This is the site of the previously approved 94-unit MacArthur-San Pablo project that went into foreclosure and was subsequently acquired by the redevelopment agency, the parcel, the site, that is, and now owned by the city as successor agency. That will ultimately result in a new affordable housing project that will eventually come to the commission for your approval. The council approved a contract with CRW to add code track and GIS capabilities to our permit tracking system. This will help us to monitor code enforcement cases and use the interactive mapping capabilities of the system. The council authorized the city manager to enter into a contract with Caltrans for a $250,000 grant for the Emeryville Oakland-Berkley Transit Study, also known as EBOT. We got word in August that we had been awarded this grant to study mutually supportive land use and transportation in policies in the Central East Bay Green Corridor areas of Emeryville, West Berkeley, and West Oakland, and we expect the study to get underway in February. The council also approved a noise waiver for evening and weekend work for a crane lift and boiler replacement on the roof of the Watergate Tower at 2,000 Powell Street, and I understand that that work is now completed. The council discussed a proposal to form a Parks and Recreation Committee to, among other things, oversee implementation of the Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan, and they directed staff to bring a resolution back to the next meeting, which is next Tuesday, October 2nd, to form that committee. They also scheduled a study session for their October 16th meeting to review the structure of all of the city's committees. The council also approved a staff recommendation to form an ad hoc committee to develop and implement a public art concept for the Powell Street overpass and the area under it to implement those proposed, those aspects of the Shell Mount Design Guidelines. The committee will include council members Asher and Brinkman, two members of the Public Art Committee, adjacent property owners, and members of the community. And finally, I provided an informational report to the council on the commission's deliberations on the art.com sign matter at your August 23rd meeting. Moving on to other news, I'd like to just remind you all about the annual celebration of the Arts Show, which is coming right up. It starts week, is it week after next, I guess, October 6th through the 28th, and it will be at 5890 Christie Avenue, which is the former, I understand, is the former Premier Crew Building behind the Public Market at 59th and Christie, which the city now owns. The gala reception will be next Friday, October 5th, from 6:00 to 9:00, and our talented resident photographer, Arlie Cassidy, once again has a piece in the show, and I understand that Commissioner Steinberg also has a piece in the show. Finally, with regard to the zoning update, I hope to see you all at the community meeting this coming Saturday, day after tomorrow, the 29th, from 10:00 to noon, here in the council chambers and the link, and that will be followed, I hope this is on all of your calendars, on Tuesday, October 30th, a joint study session of the Planning Commission and City Council, starting at 6:00 PM. The final meeting of the Steering Committee will be on Thursday, November 15th, at 6:00 PM, to review the entire code and hopefully recommend its adoption, and then have a party. And the Planning Commission adoption hearing is scheduled for your December 13th meeting, to be followed by a city council adoption hearing at their January 15th meeting. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I guess we can move to our first item on the agenda, which is the art.com sign revocation or modification. We're gonna have a little changing of the guard here. Oh, maybe not. Is Arlie gonna present?
I'll be presenting part of this, and outside council, Ben Stock will be presenting another part.
I was gonna say, if any, if the sta, you have any questions of the staff, please direct them towards Maru.
Good evening, commissioners. Chair Coomerly, so tonight, we are considering an administrative item, which is in order to initiate an action to revoke or modify the existing art.com sign permit. I'm gonna give some very brief background and then turn it over to Ben Stock. So, as you know, this sign is on 2100 Powell, one of the buildings, part of the Watergate Office Towers, across from, across from PPP, across the freeway. So, the two signs face north and south on either end of the building. This is a basic image of the sign and some of the renderings from the amended proposal that was approved. The sign that exists now was approved as an amendment on February 23rd, 2012. In June, shortly after the sign went up, staff received some complaints about the brightness, especially at night. Art.com responded by dimming the signs to 50% of their original brightness. Citizens continued to express dissatisfaction with the situation and requested dimming and/or complete shut off at night. Art.com was unwilling to turn the signs off completely at night, but stated that it could dim to 35% of the original brightness between 10:00 PM and 5:00 AM. The Planning Commission then held an informational item at your last meeting, August 23rd, where a number of citizens voiced their complaints to you. The commission then scheduled this administrative item for today to consider the order before you. Staff has visited one of the residence, residences apartments and taken pictures. On the left, you see when the sign was red, and on the right, the sign was actually pink, but came out blue. And so, at this point, art.com had initiated the suggested dimming at 10:00 PM. These photos do not capture well that there was, in fact, a dimming visible to the naked eye, but the photos were taken. And in addition, staff received information that the sign was having technical difficulties within the last 48 hours, and visited the Shoreboard Park just before the building and took a video. Unfortunately, this computer is unable to play it, but the sign was cycling through three or four different colors, not even completely at once. It was kind of a grid pattern. It was clearly having technical difficulties. So, that lasted, I understand, about 36 to 48 hours and ended sometime this afternoon. At this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Ben Stock. Thank you.
Good evening, commission members. My name is Ben Stock. I'm assisting the city with this, with this action. So, before you tonight is the relevant language of why we're here tonight. We're not here to decide the merits of whether or not the sign is operating as a nuisance, but whether there's evidence that there might be a nuisance occurring, and whether the Planning Commission members want to institute an action to either revoke or modify the permit that was issued for the sign. The relevant language is found in Section 9.492.3, which states, "The permit may be revoked or modified for cause if the following grounds are found: that the permit was obtained or extended by fraud; that one or more of the conditions upon which such permit was granted have been violated; or that the use or facility for which the permit was granted is so conducted or maintained to be detrimental to the public health or safety or as to be a nuisance." And in the order tonight, you have to identify those grounds of what those grounds might be. So, as we'll, as I'll walk you through, tonight, we're not talking about the first bullet point, that the permit was obtained or extended by fraud, but instead, that one or more conditions upon which permit was granted may have been violated, and furthermore, that the permit may be operated as to cause a nuisance. The condition in their permit that was approved by this, by the commissioners says, "Compliance with the municipal code is required and the general plan. No part of this approval shall be construed to be a violation of the Emeryville Municipal Code or the general plan. Operations on the site shall be conducted in a manner that does not create a public or private nuisance or otherwise violate the Emeryville Municipal Code." So, as you see, there's two alternative bases to revoke or modify the permit. If the permit is creating a nuisance, public or private, not just a public nuisance, or violates some other provision of the Emeryville Municipal Code. Under the performance standards of the code, the code states, "Under light and glare for nuisances, flickering or intrinsically bright sources of illumination shall be controlled so as to not to be a nuisance in residential or commercial districts." So, staff's position at this point is, from the, from the data that we have so far, there may be, the, the intrinsically bright source of the sign may be, in fact, violating this section, and moreover, may constitute a nuisance under the general law of nuisance. But as you can see, both, all the facts need to line up with the law on nuisance and whether or not a nuisance is, in fact, being created. A nuisance in California Civil Code is anything which is injurious to the health, including but not limited to, and I'll redo the most important parts, obstruction to the free use of property so as to interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life or property is a nuisance. So, the evidence we have to date suggests that there may be a nuisance occurring by the, by the output of light from the sign, and this is the, you know, the general statement of law of what nuisance is in California. California law also provides what a public and private nuisance is, but again, the permit condition requires it not to be a public or private nuisance, so it doesn't matter which one it is. But, so you know, a public nuisance is one which affects, at the same time, an entire community or neighborhood, or any considerable number of persons, although the extent of the annoyance or damage inflicted upon individuals may be unequal, and a private nuisance is everything else. These are the factors you look at to establish a public nuisance, and really, the only, the first two factors are the one, or the only first factor is what you look at for a private nuisance. But the, for a public nuisance, is whether or not the condition interferes with the comfortable enjoyment of property, whether the condition affects a substantial number of people at the same time, and the ordinary person will be reasonably annoyed or disturbed by the condition, and the serious harm outweighs the social utility of the conduct. At this point, from the evidence that we've gathered, we think there is a possibility that these four factors are present, and certainly, the first factor, that interferes with the comfortable enjoyment of property, could be present. After we issued our staff report, art.com came up with a potential settlement where they would agree to dim the sign by 35% from brightness from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM daily, and it's currently in non-effect, but, it's currently in effect, but that's not a condition, stated condition of approval, and change the color during the day instead of at midnight, which is new. While we think these steps go a long way in helping with the potential nuisance that exists at the site, the staff also wanted to have the dim, the 35% dimness happen upon darkness, not, not at 10 o'clock at night. There's evidence in the record that a lot of residents are bothered by the brightness when they're going to bed, when they're at home after work, anytime after dark, not, not some arbitrary deadline of 10 o'clock. And then, one of the things that that one photo showed you was there is a difference of color. So, the other suggestion we asked art.com to do is to require the red to be used rather than the pink or any other color, and that red blends in a lot more at nighttime than, with the other signs in the neighborhood, than some other color. So, I'll let art.com talk further tonight, because I believe they might have some additional issue, settlement potentials that they're willing to throw out there, but from, to date, this is what we have from them, and this is what we've been asking for. So, for tonight, the potential actions you could do are do nothing, let the existing art.com sign permit stand as it is with no modification, you can accept art.com's proposal that they gave you as part of your staff report, and, which they'll be presenting some further conditions. You could continue the item to the next meeting in order for more time for the parties to keep talking about a potential settlement, or you can issue the order that's attached to your draft, which is attached to your agenda. And that order would then set an evidentiary hearing at a special meeting, November 1st, where we and art.com would put forth evidence of whether or not, in fact, a nuisance does exist. With that, I'm gonna turn it back over to Arlie. Okay, that concludes staff's presentation.
Would the applicant like to come forward?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Doug Akins with the Law Firm of Hopkins and Carley, 200 Park Avenue, Palo Alto, California. I'm representing art.com, and I think the basic news I have to deliver is good news in the sense that the process seems to be working, and I think you'll find that art.com has acted in a way that you would want responsible corporate citizens to act. Upon learning of the problem, we immediately investigated the technical issues involved, the electronics, the feasibility of various adjustments to the sign, and right away, dimmed it, which was feasible, to 50% brightness. By the way, I should ask, do I have a time limit?
No.
Okay. So, while it was dimmed to 50%, we considered the limits of dimming. What are the technical issues involved in dimming it further? It turns out that dimming it below 35% of its original design brightness induces a random flickering and color change among the zillions of little LED lights, and it can't be controlled. So, there's a technical threshold below which we can't dim it. As you know from the history involved, art.com has played by all the rules, followed all the procedures, twice gotten approvals based on findings of no annoyance to neighbors, and invested $750,000 in getting this sign up there. It's crucial to the commercial mission of art.com as a business to advertise its presence. It's an, it's an online business. The more people who recognize the name, the more people are driven to the websites and the retail outlets. It's perfectly consistent with Emeryville's general plan and zoning. It's one of the good things about being in Emeryville. It allows art.com to reach, get its message out to thousands and thousands of freeway users every day. And we, but our proposal that the staff has referred to, which is reduction of brightness to 35% between 10:00 and 5:00 AM, we've considered, continued to work on that up to today, and have a new modification to that proposal, we think a substantial enhancement. I'm here to provide this proposal and ask that you direct staff tonight to propose an agreement embodying that proposal and bring it back to you for approval at a later hearing. The rejection of this proposal tonight would terminate the proposal and would be back to this relatively prosecutorial, expensive, legalistic process, but we can terminate that process tonight, and it's art.com's desire, art.com's desire to terminate it on a negotiated basis. The proposal is that we would permanently reduce the sign to 35% of its design brightness every day, and the occurred, the dimming would occur on a timer, be completely automated, one hour after sunset. And that's for technical reasons, again. As you know, from just general orientation, that building sits out there in the middle of a bright sunset, and if you dim it as the sun sets, you can't see it at all. But if you dim it an hour after sunset, you can see it for that duration while the western sky is bright, and then after sunset, it can be dimmed with no diminution of its functional, essential purpose, which is to be visible at night, for goodness sake. So, that's the proposal. We dim it every night, one hour after sunset to 35%. Any color changes would occur only during daytime hours. The staff's most recent notation that they would like dimming to be deep red during dimming, I don't know the technical merits of that, and I'm not authorized to negotiate on that, on that issue. It's new to us. But if you accept the proposal and direct staff to work out an agreement, that technical issue can be incorporated into the agreement and responded to accordingly. It's a simple proposal. It's one that terminates the expense and bureaucratic hassle of continuing an revocation proceeding. I think we've made clear in our previous correspondence that this is not a nuisance, public or private, that it does not affect sufficient people. Mere irritation or annoyance is not a factual basis for a nuisance determination. Nuisance determinations require a balancing of interests, and the, the commercial interests involved are substantial, affecting not only art.com, but every other business establishment sign. We think we've approached this in a constructive and good faith manner. Our proposal embodies a 65% reduction in the brightness of the sign every day, every night, at a time when both the neighbors can not be bothered by a bright sign and a black sky, and it, and it takes care of the fact that this is a sign struggling for visibility on a freeway in the middle of a bright sunset. As the annual calendar changes the occurrence of sunset, the timer would keep up with that, so it would not, there would not be a out-of-phase condition. I don't want to go on forever, but I think you understand our position. We want to meet the city more than halfway. I think this will be a substantial victory for the neighbors. It certainly will accomplish the crucial purposes of the sign, and these are, this is a sign to which art.com has a vested right, based on its three-quarters of a million-dollar investment. We would like the city to accept this proposal, the commission to accept this proposal tonight, direct staff to bring back a one-page, two-point agreement for your ratification at a later date, and ask that tonight, you do not instigate a revocation proceeding. Evidentiary proceedings like that are an administrative trial. They're legalistic, they're expensive, they're time-consuming, they're a hassle, and they undercut the essential purpose of our good faith negotiation in bringing to you this settlement proposal. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
I have a question. So, in your presentation, you stated that your proposal is that the sign be dimmed one hour after sunset?
That's correct.
And your, your letter, I believe, stated at 10 o'clock?
The letter was then, this proposal is now.
Okay.
We worked it out this afternoon. This is, this is our final proposal, it's our best proposal, and I think it accommodates all the interests.
Does it, and, and does it differ in any other way from the letter that we received?
Not, not to my knowledge. It's automatic, everyday dimming at one hour after sunset, color changes during the day exclusively, and while it's not dimmed, it would be at its design brightness.
Would it stay one color all day long, or would it change colors during the day?
It would change colors during the day, consistently with our permit, and during the daytime, we're unaware of any complaints.
Once.
Yes, the permit allows a color change. We're unaware of any complaints from neighbors or anyone else about daytime color changes. If there are such complaints, we'll, you know, we'll happily talk about that, but that's a crucial feature of the design, it's permitted. The technology incorporated into the sign is intentionally and expensively intended to be able to change colors. If we had a permit that prohibited color changes, we wouldn't have such an expensive sign. But we do, and we have a right to maintain it, and we're gonna defend it as well as we can.
But if it was only once during the day.
But the changes would occur only, only during the day, and only in accordance, only in accordance with the permit conditions.
And you said that you're not authorized to consider whether the evening color would be a consistent dimmed red color, right?
That's correct. I'm not authorized, in the sense, so, the staff's proposal as of tonight, in those details, is new to us. Our proposal is new to the staff and to you. If you direct staff and art.com to work out an agreement embodying the central features, which is dimming an hour after sunset, one color change during the day exclusively, then I think we have an agreement. We can bring it back to you for your consideration, and we're done.
I have a question. So, just to confirm, are we talking, your proposal is talking about both signs or just the north-facing sign, just to confirm?
My understanding, and I don't, I can't say this definitively from art.com's perspective, but I think it's both. In, in our letters, for example, we define both signs on both faces as the sign. Now, I don't know technically whether you can regulate one sign differently from another through, you know, with electronics and timers and what have you, so, it would be So it would be at least the sign facing east and facing the residential building. Whether it's the other one, I simply don't know on a technical basis.
I have a question for Kevin.
Sure, and let me just introduce myself. I'm Kevin Siegel. I'm serving as counsel to the board commission in this to help guide in your advice and separate it from any role that the city and Mr. Stock has in asking for the prosecution of, of this or in the pursuit of settlement negotiations, just to make sure everybody understands my role. So, yes.
It's my understanding that we do not have the discretion to accept this deal because it would be in violation of the Brown Act. Is that true?
What I would say, and we spoke about this briefly, is that I think you can give direction and comment on it, give some impact and insight. I don't think that tonight's meeting you could import or create any terms to the agreement. So I think that, I, I wouldn't go so far as to say you accept the deal, but I would certainly say you can provide some input, you think this would be good or not good or with modification, and give direction to staff to work it out, and then if they can work something out with art.com, bring that back to you for an actual approval.
Okay, but we do, okay.
So, right, so you can give direction, comment, you can talk about it certainly, but you can't take formal action because it's not part of the notice in order to create any modification to the terms. So you could not modify the permit tonight, but you could give directions to what you would like to see, or the parties tried to achieve as far as a modification to the permit that then they could bring to you, present it as a revised permit, and ask for your approval of that.
Okay.
So that would essentially be a continuance with some direction?
Well, it's, yes, it, it's a bit like a continuous with directions. It has to come back if you want it for approval. You could also, you, you, it's in your discretion to say, we don't want to, like you were suggesting, the city to commence the enforcement action, or you could ask the city to, yes, we think you ought to commence the enforcement action and simultaneously try to work on a settlement. So you have lots of discretion as to what you can do and how you want to give direction as how to proceed, but the, the only point I was making is that you can't make a decision on what the permit should say tonight.
Through the chair, if I may, our, our analysis of the Brown Act issue is identical to what you've just received, and the, our proposal is formatted the way it is for the very reasons spoken by your special counsel. The two essential ingredients of our request tonight are, number one, give direction to staff to prepare an agreement along the lines that I've enunciated, and number two, not to order an evidentiary hearing and continue with the prosecutorial aspect of this. As special counsel mentioned, you can either order the evidentiary hearing and continue to talk settlement, or you can refrain on the evidentiary hearing and continue to talk settlement. From our perspective, obviously, we've spent tens of thousands of dollars and untold time and, and effort in trying to get to this compromise point. Continuing forward under the, the threat of revocation proceedings and evidentiary hearings and what have you simply translates as a lot more money, time, and hassle. We have the option, obviously, of directing staff to pursue this agreement along the lines enunciated, and if you don't like it, re-initiate, go, go back and at that time, order the evidentiary hearing. So you lose nothing by stopping the administrative prosecution proceedings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a question?
One more question for you.
Is, so this can be programmed, so it changes modes one hour after sunset? I am assuming it can do the same thing one hour before sunset? I would be technically capable?
I, I, I'm not a technician, but I've been impressed with the amount of control that is permissible. The answer to your question is probably yes, but I don't know that for certain.
Okay.
But put it this way, it's put on a timer, and the, the timer keeps up every week or two weeks with whenever sunset occurs, and it automatically adjusts the time when it dims the lights.
Okay. And if there isn't anybody here tonight that can answer more technical questions?
That's correct.
Okay.
I mean, I'll try, but I...
One of the questions I had is, this sign is made up of an array of pucks, I think they call them, term them, of LEDs, and what I'm wondering is, these pucks are, say they're rated 500 watts, is it possible to replace the puck with a 25 watt?
In concept, it probably is, just on a common sense basis, but on an equally common sense basis, what you see there costs $240,000, and we'd rather tinker with the electronics than replace the entire thing.
But there are limits to, at, at 35% of total brightness?
Yes, that's the limit.
It limits, it drops out.
We run into that wall of how dim we can make it.
So, so I guess where I'm going is that if you use a smaller wattage to begin with, you would have more control over those limits?
That's probably true, but at the risk of the sign's essential purpose. I mean, it sits up on, high up on a tall building for the purpose of proclaiming a commercial message to thousands of people. If it's dimmed to the point where it's invisible, then it's worthless.
And it has been running at the 35%?
From 10 o'clock on, yes.
If you were to get direction to negotiate that agreement, whether, whether it's with the red at night or not, when would you start implementing it? Because part of our problem is that we had, we didn't have a clear understanding what it was going to look like before, so we don't have a clear understanding what it's going to look like if those terms are, are gone forward.
Certainly, and again, I have no authority to negotiate unanticipated details, but I can predict that as soon as an agreement is reached and approved by the city, we would implement it immediately.
So you wouldn't start testing it so that people could see whether that actually accomplished the, the purpose?
We've already done that. We started testing it back, we alluded to testing it in the letter, and now we're satisfied that at 35%, it's working, it's accompli, accomplishing its purpose.
I just, I want to make sure I understand the, the history of the, the dimming of it. So, so when it was, when it was first installed, obviously, it was operating at 100%, and then at some point it was dimmed to 50%?
That's right.
And now, it now, so now, just before 10 o'clock, it displays at 50% of its original brightness, and after 10 o'clock, it displays at 35% of its original brightness?
That's correct. That's correct. So what you're seeing is, what, what the staff showed in the pictures was that 15% dimming, it's not necessarily all that glaring, and that's not obvious. Well, put it this way, it's obvious to the naked eye, but not so obvious to a camera. I think it'll be obvious to the residents because it used to be 100%, and a 65% reduction in brightness is a substantial reduction by any standard.
And it's been running at 65% for how long again?
At 10 o'clock, it dims to 35%, which is the 65% reduction.
But how, how, how many?
How many days has that been?
Days, weeks?
I couldn't tell you for certain. I don't know. But let's say a week or two.
More than a week?
Yes, something like that. As we have tinkered with the electronics to see what can be done, that has been the regimen. Counsel says that it was probably September 6th, but I don't know. Thank you very much.
Questions?
I'm wondering if it's possible to ask staff about their observation of the sign?
Sure.
Maru?
I.
I think Arlie Cassidy should be in a position to answer that question.
Hello, Commissioners. So I visited Lori Carsen's apartment, I want to say on a Thursday and a Monday after the September 6th implementation of the dimming at 10 o'clock. So the Thursday visit was the red, and the Monday visit was the pink, and I took a number of pictures both before and after from two different apartments, outside and inside, and viewed it as thoroughly as I could. The, the sign's dimming is not something that you, or that I, or to my knowledge, Lori has seen happen, and it's not a specific kind of chunk down as you're staring at the sign, but when you look at it before and after, you can tell that it's dimmer, and that's primarily by comparing it to the signs adjacent to it. The Holiday Inn sign, it was especially easy to compare on the Thursday when it was red. The Holiday Inn sign, obviously, is the same dark red, and it was noticeably brighter before the 10 o'clock, and then seemed about the same brightness after the 10 o'clock dimming. The pink is a very different type of color, so, and also strangely had that kind of pink and blue combination, so it's harder to compare brightness to the red, but there was still a noticeable dimming between before and after 10 o'clock.
So did it, I mean, it supposedly dims 15 additional percent. Did it, did it seem approximately 15% dimming?
That sounds approximately right. Any other questions? Thank you.
Although this is an administrative item, I would like to open up the floor for public comment. If anyone would like to comment, please come forward. You have three minutes to speak, and then please sign in afterwards once you're done. Thank you.
My pardon, I forgot to mention that the two letters that were emailed to you earlier are also here and printed, so if anyone wanted to see letters from the residents, which you also have on the dais, the copies are here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lori Carsen. I've been before you before. I heard the buzz in the elevator about the sign when it was first at 100%, and...
Could you pull the mic down a little?
Oh, you've told me that before, thank you. Can you hear me? And, you know, I just heard so many complaints, I decided maybe we should gather together, and we did call a meeting, and obviously, we have quite a large contingency here of residents in the Pacific Park Plaza building. We have all kinds of different viewpoints about what we would like to see happen. There are many that, of course, want it to just disappear and be gone and take it down, take both signs down and not have Emeryville marked or branded by this sign. I certainly started out with the intention of hopefully working this out in an amicable way. As I told you, having been from a family of lawyers, I am the least litigious person you would want to meet, and I didn't want to have some kind of a negative kind of situation here. I really want to work it out. We feel a little bit like we're dealing with Goliath, you know? We're just residents saying, hey, it's affecting not only the quality of our life, which is one of the conditions that we feel is being violated here, but also we do have some health issues in the building that are also a problem. So we do think that there is certainly evidence that we should have this hearing take place for a modification or revocation hearing. I know that they had some kind of a problem with the sign, and it was flashing colors for the last couple of nights, and it did that before on June 29th. And it was interesting to me that it wasn't fixed immediately, especially knowing that we were going to be meeting here, and I thought, you know, they probably don't see it. They have one floor during, of the building, not that many employees, but you know what? We not only saw it, it affected a lot of us, and for me, I couldn't escape it. We have 1,100 square feet of living space. There is no window in our condo that doesn't look at the art.com sign, and it isn't that we're singling that particular sign out, it's that the Sebel sign was a very graceful one-line sign. It was backlit. It had, you can't even compare it to an LED sign, and truthfully, we don't really care what the illumination was, there was never a complaint. This is the first complaint I've ever had, having lived in PPP for 20 years. I've never had a complaint before. The 10 o'clock dimming, I'd like to address that. At 10 o'clock at night, the LED sign still reflects light into our condo, enough that for my grandchildren, I can do hand puppets, shadow puppets on my wall. The, the light that comes into our condo is only from the illumination of this particular sign. It bounces off the right-hand side of our main window because it's a white building, and so it reflects, and I think those of you that have come have seen it. My time's up, sorry. There's plenty of others. Thank you.
Thank you. Please sign in.
Hi, I'm Chris Owens, and congratulations, Vanessa. Aren't you lucky that tonight is your first night as chair? And I am a resident of Pacific Park Plaza in unit 1927, and I am not affected by the sign. And I guess I got really lucky because 27 years ago, when I looked at Pacific Park Plaza to buy a unit, I wanted my floor plan with the San Francisco view, and I couldn't afford it because it was $100,000 more. So now I live on the other side. And so I wonder if this garish sign does what it does to the real estate values of the people with the San Francisco view, and, and how it affects them. I have several other things I want to say. Art.com is contending that they're leasing the sign and that it's costing them $750,000. Well, we have over 200 units affected by it. We have 35 corner units, which are the more expensive and penthouses, where each of them has a value of about $750,000. So the total value just of the expensive units that are affected by this is $25 million. So don't give me $750,000. Art.com also contends that their sign is no brighter than the previous Sebel sign. Well, that is just totally ludicrous, because never, ever was there a peep out of the building. As a matter of fact, we're really, really good, reasonable people, and we value our businesses, and we were really proud to have Sebel in town, and we were sorry that they got swallowed up by Oracle and left town. So finally, art.com states that we are denying them the right to advertise their business. Actually, we're not, because we do not have a problem with the sign on the south side. So, which frankly gives art.com a much broader exposure to the freeways than the north sign, because everybody, right now, with the north sign that we object to, all they get is the people coming down Highway 880 in the morning to go to the city. The other sign gives them all of 880 coming back at night, and it gives them all of 580 east and west coming to and from San Francisco, being stuck in the bumper-to-bumper traffic, and they get an absolutely fabulous exposure. Not only do they get all of that area, they get all of West Oakland and probably all the way down to Jack London Square. So wow, you know, that's like a million-dollar advertising exposure. So why do they need to have a sign on the north end and invade the tranquility of our homes? Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Harold Jones. I live on the 29th floor of Pacific Park Plaza, directly across from the art.com signage, both in direction and also visual height. And I'll admit that seeing an unusually bright, shining neon light that wasn't there before suddenly in the sky, it takes a little bit to get used to it, and eventually, something like that begins to visually blend with the background, and, and you do get used to it. In fact, when my neighbors started complaining about the sign, I kind of hesitated to weigh in, thinking, I'll get used to it, and they will too. Unfortunately, that's not been the case. The colors go way, way beyond illumination. They change constantly, and sometimes they, they glow at night. Now, those pictures didn't really do justice, but I invite you to come to my unit, well, I won't say that, but come to my unit at 9:30, and you'll see, even like at 3 o'clock in the morning, it literally glows, and it may be certain colors that, that do that. But on August 24th, the commission approved this sign with some specific, and I thought very thoughtful, conditions, all of which made sense to me. The question now seems to be whether or not this sign violates any civil code that would determine it to be a public or private nuisance. And I don't honestly know that the impact of this, on me at least, could legally be defined as a nuisance. But if art.com claims to be voluntarily dimming the sign, it's not obvious to me, and in fact, almost adding insult to injury. It just seemed like yesterday was an odd day for the sign to suddenly begin this non-stop flat, non-stop flashing animation. But it may be determined that no civil code has been violated, but I'd like to share something that is being violated, and this is really interesting because the violation happens to be something that ironically is prominently displayed on art.com's own website homepage, and it seems to put this whole issue in a greater perspective, and I encourage the attorney who represents art.com to think about that as he advises his clients. While there may not be a legal violation, this violates the, the precept of art.com. It says on their website, "When you hang a piece of art, its impact isn't limited to just the space between the frames. It has the power to fill the room, change the mood, and affect everyone in it. And when you find the art you love, you will love your space more. We believe art is dynamic, personal, and connected to now, and the experience of living with it should be too." Emeryville, that's art.com, so we applaud art.com's view of that, but Emeryville is viewed by so many as a perfect viewed by so many as a perfect meld of business and community, and the art dot sign, art.com sign is art, I guess, and as they themselves espouse, that sign is not limited to just the space on that building, it's the space around the building, below the building, across from their building. It fills our community, it changes our mood, it affects us in many different ways. We welcome art.com and the contribution that they're going to make to the city of Emeryville and our community, but we, we also believe that art is dynamic, it's personal, it's connected to now, and our experience of living with it should be too. I urge the commission to carefully consider the residents' views, the surrounding community, and I'm available, I would volunteer to help in any way I can. I used to be with the Port of Oakland, and I dealt with the three billboards that have LED signage. I mean, we got lots of complaints, and there are things that can be done. But I just urge you to, to consider the views of, of the residents and the impact that it is having. While it may not be a legal nuisance, it does violate our, our, our rights. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Paul Gerhardt, and my wife and I live at Pacific Park Plaza. We've lived right in front of the art.com sign, but not by our choice. I've spoken to you before at your last meeting, and I have spoken in front of the city council. Several members of the city council and the planning commission have come to our home to see the art dot sign for themselves, from my two bedrooms, from my living room, from my kitchen, and even from my bathroom. I am sure by now you all know how we feel about the sign, but now, it's affecting my health and it's affecting my wife's health. We're unable to sleep at night because of the light intrusion. As tight as we try to close the Venetian blinds, it just shines through. We wake up at night with severe headaches. There's no way to escape the effects of the intrusion of this light that comes into every room of our home. We're concerned about our property value is down now, because if we wanted to sell, we're going to have to disclose this light intrusion to any buyer. These issues could become litigation issues for us in the future, but I really hope not. No one consulted us before the sign went up, and hundreds of us now live right in front of the art.com sign. There have been a lot of words to describe the art.com sign, but one word seems to stand out best to describe the art.com sign, and that word is mistake. I've heard that from individual members of the city council, I've heard that from members of the planning commission. I haven't heard anyone from city hall support the sign. The art.com sign is a mistake, and I think most of us agree with that by now. There's been talk about trying to dim the sign, but here's what I've seen from my home. The sign is dimmed a little bit around ten PM, but depending on the color of the sign, the dimming has little or no effect. But around midnight, the sign changes color and returns to full brightness for the next twenty-two hours. Dimming the sign is totally ineffective and is not a solution to this problem. Our property values and our health are an issue here now. I think you need to do the right thing tonight, and we need to correct this mistake. You need to make a decision in favor of hundreds of Emeryville residents, not an internet poster company. The art dot sign, the art dot sign needs to be removed. There'll probably be threats of lawsuits or whatever, but you have a city attorney to deal with that issue. I urge you to issue an order for removal of the art.com sign. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this? Come on up. It's Harley.
Hello, I'm Stanley Hague, I also live in PPP. I've spoken to this group and to the council before. I, I, I think that, those who've gone before me have been very eloquent. I wanted to address, I don't want to cover the same ground, I just want to really emphasize some of the criticism I have of art.com's response to this brilliant catastrophe. One, they, they have frequently, continually, supported the decision for this sign by pointing out that it's a merely, merely a replacement for the old Siebel sign, that the Siebel had a sign, an illuminated sign. We have taken over their premier position in the building, and we deserve an opportunity to show our sign. And, and their, their claim in their written document that was circulated that, that this new, that the new sign is demonstrably no brighter than the Siebel sign. Others have said, this is just totally inaccurate. This, the Siebel sign was a subtle backlit sign that blended in with the color scheme of the building, was a, and it, this building is one of the most beautiful buildings of its size and purpose that I've ever seen. It's a gorgeous building, it's the best-looking building in Emeryville. It had a sign that was elegant and understated, and ironically, if you go to the website, the art.com website, they proudly show a picture of twenty-one-hundred Powell Street, and what do they show? A daytime picture with a faint sea-green version of the art.com sign. So they even recognize that the sign, they, in that one example, they're emulating this, this old Siebel sign. It's very, very disingenuous of them, I think. I, the, I wanted to say something else about this sign. Excuse me, I do, I don't like public speaking at all. I, oh, the, the issue of whether or not fraud is, is at place here, is at play here. Not, that's an awfully strong word. I don't really have as big a gripe with art.com. I have a few gripes, their claim that this sign is not brighter than the Siebel sign, et cetera. But my complaint is with the Young Electric Sign Company of Salt Lake City, the, the designer and manufacturer of this sign. Art.com shouldn't be expected to be experts in this sort of new technology. You shouldn't be thought of as experts of this type of technology, the planning staff aren't experts. That, if anybody's responsible for this catastrophe, it's, they should, they knew or should have known how bright and intrusive this sign was, and, and by not letting us all know, they're the ones that are responsible, and they ought to be on the hook for it. They ought to refund, and they ought to take it down, give them a better sign, we ought to go through the whole permit process again, now that we know what we're really facing. And they should move this sign to the, we should move this sign to the Columbus, Ohio site for, for art.com.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Come on up, and then if there are more people, come on up and wait in line so we can hear you efficiently. I know there's lots of folks still, probably.
Hello, I'm Brian Gross, I live at Pacific Park Plaza, I've lived there for twenty-seven years, I've spoken to this group before and the city council. I'm a lifetime art dealer, and I have a gallery in the city, and I've been involved in art and architecture and public art projects all of my career. The, I don't want to repeat everything that's already been said, but I'll just summarize it, the, the basic problem is the, the sign is a mistake. I think that the city inadvertently entered into something that they didn't know, they did not know exactly what they'd be getting. I think there are issues of the technology that were not worked out. No one knew what the impact would be of this electronic sign. Looking back through documents of the process, the evolution of the art.com sign, at one point in the original version that was approved was a, was art.com all on one line, and it was closer to the, closer to the size of the Siebel sign. What is there now is a gross exaggeration of that, and it is more or less a billboard. It's intrusive, and I also am very worried about how it will tag Emeryville, deflate home values throughout Emeryville, not just our building. But the thing is a problem, and I think that this group has an obligation to really fix it. So I hope that you can get there. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Reza Ilkani, I am a twelve-year resident in Emeryville and Pacific Park Plaza. I want to echo the issue of mistake, but from art.com's perspective. Let's say if I were one of the executives of art.com. It was a mistake from, with respect to the commercial and marketability of the sign. It is an extremely unattractive sign. What is the data point for it? Look, there has never been any other complaints to any other signs. The second, the parts that makes it really unattractive are the colors and the luminosity, and also the font size. So if you look, compare the art.com sign, look at the A or any of the letters in art.com sign compared to Hilton, it's much bigger, and they stack it on top of each other, so you're looking at a font size that exponentially bigger than the other signs. So that's point one. The second point is that they spent so much money on the luminosity, but it's really been a waste of time. You can't, you can't really see it. If you're driving from University Avenue, it's just a one big, sorry, okay, it is one big blur, so it really can't be seen. Secondly, what is the advertisement value? They are an internet business model, the people who commute along the eighty are the same group of people. If you change the color to blue, to a pink, to a yellow, they're not going to buy more. So those are the, the mistakes with respect to the advertisement itself. The second thing is, once you engage a battle, you really need to look at the consequences of your dispute. So the, first of all, it's going to have a lot of diverted resources for art.com, where they could spend on pushing their business forward. Secondly, it, they will create, they will disenfranchisize, they will divert a lot of the potential customers if the word gets out that there is this corporate entity fighting with a group of residents, and obviously, an art entity wouldn't want to have that image as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mitra Latifi, although my unit is not facing the dot com sign, but I've heard from some of my friends who are facing the sign, and they have told me that overnight, when they're sleeping, they have to cover their eyes in order they be able to sleep, and that is something to consider, because that's the nighttime, you, that's a piece of your home, and you want to relax and, and enjoy the night. And to make this story short, I would like, the way I'm hearing everyone talking, and first of all, thank you for the excellent presentation, presentation of the people, and precisely definition of the nuisance, which was very educational, I appreciate that. And I, the way I'm hearing everyone is just that you all are looking at the human being's comfort and peace of mind versus seven-hundred-fifty-thousand dollars. The decision is yours, but it seems pretty simple and straightforward. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else?
So I'm looking here at the packet about this art.com sign issue, and I see just a huge amount of human effort. A lot of money's been spent by the staff here. Just seems, it just looks many, it's half an inch thick of city employee work on this issue. And then here I see, oh, just page after page of people signing petition against the art.com sign. It's just page after page, very dense with signatures from people at PPP, they don't like the sign, and so I'm just sort of marveling about my, my town of Emeryville, because in this town, we have teachers getting laid off, the schools in crisis, and then we have a school board meeting where they're laying off teachers, and you get one or two people show up that are concerned about that. You get the city council approving favored developers, getting millions of dollars in subsidies from the, from the, the city of Emeryville to tear down historically significant buildings and, and cut down trees and, and to, to build a, a project that doesn't, that needs, that's against the zoning ordinance, you'll get a couple of people complain about But when you get a sign that can be seen from Pacific Park Plaza, well, you, you get a full house, and it just, it's sort of, it's upsetting that I live in a town like this, where you get, the priority seems sort of skewed. I, I mean, I'm just, I mean, I think that if enough people don't want the sign, well, I don't think we should have the sign. But I just sort of wish that some people that are here tonight would show similar passion about issues that really matter in our town. It's just sort of upsetting to me to see, to see this amount of effort for this issue. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
My name is Gabriel Bosso. I am a resident and an owner at Pacific Park Plaza. How much time do we have, by the way? Is it-
Three minutes.
Three minutes, and clock started already?
Yeah.
I'll try to be quick. You know, a lot of the folks that spoke before me, I think, raised a lot of great issues and points that I would have made. I appreciate your comments, by the way. I don't know that I would trivialize this or suggest that it's any lesser of an issue, but I think you made some great points. I'll try to bullet point through just some of the, the things that I've noticed. You know, the predominant thought that's gone through my mind as I, you know, kind of thought about coming here to speak was asking people where they live. Where do you guys live? Where do the owners of art.com sign live? I think the other gentleman that went to their website to understand, you know, their perspective on art made really good point. But you know, what I would emphasize is, this sign is outside the window of our home, and it, it blasts its light right into my bedroom. It is affecting my ability to sleep negatively. That's not good. I bought this unit because I love the view, and I think the, the points that were made, that were brought up from art.com's own website about their philosophy and their ethos about art are so ironic and so completely compelling that I think you guys have a lot of good information. Though, going through this packet of information that they've prepared, there's a lot of stuff that, you know, I think is factually inaccurate. For example, they say in one section here, "The formal proceedings proposed are unnecessary, arbitrary, arbitrary and a poor precedent, allowing a few subjective complaints to jeopardize expensive and important and perfectly legal permitted advertising." That might be conceptually accurate, but it's factually inaccurate. I'm a commercial banker, and I can appreciate their capital investment. Previous speakers pointed out that the capital investment we've made into this property on our side is our primary residences, some of the biggest investments we'll make in our life might also be taken into consideration. I don't see that mentioned in their argument. You know, there's probably a lot more to bring up that I can't really outline. I was listening to the news last week on NPR, driving to one of my appointments, Highway eighty-five down near Sunnyvale is repealing a sign because it's too bright and it's distracting drivers. Imagine if it was blasting into the window in their home. I mean, I really want to emphasize this, and I think that if the art.com, the owners of that sign, want to put this sign outside of their bedroom window, that's fine, but it still doesn't mean that they would have my permission to put it outside my window. I didn't ever see the Siebel sign, I don't really see how that's relevant. I can, I think one thing that they said in here that was very relevant is the impact that it would have on the business community, and I think that is a very fair point to make, but I don't think that encapsulates the entirety of the situation. And so even though I think they make that point about the city council having to be fair about the message they'll send to the business community, which I think is a very legitimate point to make, I hope you guys know that you are following a procedure, and there is, there is merit to what we're saying. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Michael Millman, and I'm a resident at Pacific Park Plaza. I've lived in the building for 10 years, first on the 27th floor, now on the 30th floor, and the art.com sign is literally right outside of my window. I share every concern that other residents have mentioned, and I wanted to mention something myself, from my perspective, that is, what I think is important. If you bought something and you enjoyed inherently the view that has substantially changed after you moved in, you didn't see any of the deliberations or the process or hear about any of that when it was being promulgated. And you have to deal with what we have to deal with right now, coupled with looking at that sign when it, it starts flashing all over the place. It looks, I mentioned this before, the city council and the prior meetings, and it makes Emeryville, to me, feel like vaudeville, okay? And I don't like that. I really don't like that, because I live here, I pay taxes here, I have a business here, and I own multiple properties here. There is no doubt in my mind that our property values have been negatively impacted. Period. End of story. I've spoken to three different realtors about this that I work with on a regular basis. I am not anti-business, and I really think that a careful balancing of the interests here, you have a, you have a task in front of you, which I know we all appreciate. I just want you to think about it from a resident's perspective, and also people who are here in business paying taxes and property taxes. I'm very upset about this sign, and I know that you guys are going to make a decision that supports the best interests of Emeryville and all the parties involved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. And so what we have before us is a decision to either adopt the resolution to initiate action to revoke or modify the permit or not. Would you like to start, John?
Sure. Thank you for all the people that came out here tonight to, to really talk to us about this and what you're experiencing. And also thank you for the people that invited me to their condos so that I could experience it, which was very helpful for me. So when I did that, I experienced three things. The first is that, and I, ultimately, I do find this to be a nuisance. I approved the sign when it came before us, and I really didn't know the impact of how bright these lights would be, how obnoxious this sign would be. Had no idea. This is an emerging technology. Had I known it was going to be anything like this, there was no way I would have approved this. So the issues that I really saw are three different things. The first is the quality of the light, and the quality of an LED light is totally different than the quality of a backlit sign with plastic lettering that's translucent. It's totally very much different than a neon sign, which has a gentle warm glow to it. I would term the quality of light as glaring, I think is really the word to use, and harsh. If I could describe this as a sound, I would call it shrill or piercing. It's, it's a quality of light that's really important here. So when we're talking, when it's been compared with a Siebel sign, it's totally different on that account alone. The second is the intensity of the light. It's what I experienced last night when I walked into somebody's unit, and this was about nine o'clock at night, maybe 9:30, is I could literally see my shadow on the wall from this light. It is extremely bright. I can see the sign from the BART train in West Oakland. I can see it driving down AD, coming southbound, and as other people have pointed out, it has brightness, but it is not legible until you get to about Ashby Avenue. I actually feel that if they dimmed the sign more, it would become more legible and not less legible. So the third thing is the color of the light. And again, last night, when the, when the sign was going through its random motions of all kinds of different things, it was actually very helpful for me, because what I discovered was, there was a point in the cycle that it went to a deep red. When it did that, my shadow on the wall faded out, and I think that's really important. And I've had several people that I've talked to say that, you know, it's like, we've got the, this big Hilton Garden sign on the building. It's red, it's big, but we don't find it offensive. It's not, it's not distracting. And I think that color is a very key thing to it. So I think we have solutions here. I think we can come up with something that works for everybody, but at this point, my feelings are that art.com has come up with too little too late, and I'm going to throw something out here for discussions, things that I think we could possibly look at. These are things that art.com could implement next week, and we could try it and see what the, see what the impact is, and maybe we can stop this before it gets too far. But the first thing is, I haven't heard anybody complain about the south-facing sign. So I think we really need to decouple the south-facing sign from the north-facing sign. Let the south-facing sign operate as it's currently operating. One of our conditions of approval was that we wanted the signs to operate together. So I would suggest that we decouple those, let the south-facing sign operate independently. The second is that it appears that this sign has the ability to be controlled on a time-of-day schedule, or even more sophisticated, to track the sunset times. What I'm proposing is that this sign make its mode change from the day mode to the night mode, instead of an hour after sunset, a half hour before sunset. We shouldn't have to see this glaring, and I mean glaring, sign at sunset. These are people's homes. This is offensive. But I think if we make the transition to a lower brightness before sunset, it'll have a much, make it a much easier transition for the people in PPP. The third thing is to match the color, the hue, and the saturation as close as possible to the red Hilton Garden sign for night operation. And I didn't have time to do a whole lot of research, but I know from my times on boats and boating, that we used a red light at the nav table that night because it wasn't jarring to your eyes. And I think, in my experience, when I saw that sign cycle through its period of, brief period of red last night, is that it isn't jarring. So I'd like to try a deep, solid red. Every night, it goes to a solid red. And then the last thing is to dim the sign at night to 35% of its maximum brightness. I'd like to see it dimmer. I'd like to see the pucks replaced with smaller wattage or the equivalent in lumens or whatever it is, but let's try this. Let's try something like this at the 35% that it's currently capable of. I want to be reasonable with art.com, but I certainly want to be reasonable with the people that live at PPP. So those are my comments.
Anyone like to go next? Kyrie?
Thank you. So some of the comments that I want to make, I'll start with the first one, which is, I'm not really clear why the, there's a need for multiple colors for the sign in order for art.com to adequately do their advertising. It seems that, from what I understand, they don't necessarily have a logo that is one color, like some of the businesses that we have here in town, so. And it seems that, as far as the colors are concerned, the way that I've observed it myself, the colors seem to be, some colors are more intense than others, and I've perceived that at least one color that I see on a regular basis is not, it's actually blurry, which is the color blue. It has a halo around it. It's, first I thought it was my eyes, but I drive by it every morning at 7:00 on my way to Berkeley, and whenever it's blue, I can't read it, it's really fuzzy. So if I were a driver on the freeway, it might be distracting to see that, that blue, and not be able to actually make out what it says. So I think it's, it's a bit of a distraction for, for drivers. As far as the, the dimming effect, if the dimming works for certain colors, but it doesn't work for others, I think that there needs to be some more experimentation with making, making the dimming more consistent, so that, that all the colors are dimmed the same amounts. And I think that's similar to what you were saying about the hue and the intensity that needs to be more consistent. Speaking of consistency, I think that the, the signs that are in the area, such as the red signs, it would probably be a good idea for the art.com sign to be more, I would prefer if it were more that color most of the time, red, because it's more consistent with the signs that we have in Emeryville. And then there's a question of the dimming time, and just sitting here in today's meeting, and I'm sitting across from an open window, and it's now almost 8:00, and it really has just gotten dark, so I think it would be, if I were to be exposed to waiting until almost 9:00 until the, the dimming took place, that would be, I would have an issue with that. So I think that we should explore earlier dimming times. So, and that's, those are my comments.
Thank you. John?
I don't, I don't have a whole lot to add, but I'll just say a couple of things. One is that I did try to go observe the sign last night, and I tried to get there right around 10:00 so that I could see it, both before and after 10:00. Unfortunately, the sign on the north elevation was just freaking out. It looked like a discotheque. It needed some Bee Gees music along with it. But, and so I actually, I did take a little video on my phone, but it doesn't really do it justice, that you can just see the, the kind of colors flickering in the distance. But it was, I mean, it was clear that it had some sort of computer glitch. So anyway, I was disappointed that I wasn't able to evaluate the brightness of the, I mean, I've obviously seen the brightness of the, the normal intensity of the sign, but I wasn't able to observe the reduced brightness last night when I tried to. The other thing I will say is that I did speak to a sign contractor that I know, and my question for him was, was whether, basically whether some sort of plastic face could be put over an LED sign that would diffuse the light more like, you know, more like standard channel letter, well, you know, what, what we have come to know as standard channel letters, which are usually neon illuminated. And he told me that that was something that could be done. I think in this case, we have, you know, this particular sign, which changes color. I think that adds complexity to it. But in my mind, I think going, you know, just looking into the future, I think that's, if not with this sign, I think that's something that we should explore with future, at least with future LED signs that come before us, is, because to me, that, that seems to be the problem. I think if, if you have channel, LED channel letters that have, you know, some sort of face over them that diffuses the light, I'm not sure that it looks all that different from, you know, what the Hilton Garden Inn sign or, or any of the other numerous neon-lit channel letters that we have in Emeryville. And then I was going to say one other thing, but it slipped my mind, so if I remember it, I'll come, I'll come back and say it.
Thanks.
Well, I'm sort of on the same page with what I've heard from other commissioners, which is that the intensity, I think that there is cause to find that this could be a nuisance to people that are living in PPP, so I think we have a basis to go forward with a revocation. And to me, the question is whether we're moving in the direction where we may be able to resolve this without going through that process. I think that the intensity on the north side of this, of the building is just, I don't think it would be acceptable to me if I were living there, and I think one of the things that is the most disturbing is probably the color changes, because some of the colors are just much colder and much more garish than others. So there have been a number of suggestions, including putting some kind of a shield that would block it from direct vision of PPP, or maintaining it in just the red color and dimmed to the maximum extent from sunset or before sunset or for some time. What I'm sort of grappling with is how to test these things out, because as I said before, the reason we have this problem is we didn't know what it was going to look like before. So we can say, yeah, 35% would be all right from this time to this time, but we really don't know yet. So I think we're moving in the right direction. I think we really do need to get this resolved, and it is a nuisance. It appears to be a nuisance for a good number of residents, whether it's public or private, whether it's legally supportable as a nuisance. That's a factual question that we would have to answer at the next step. But I would like to see art.com, I think it's true that the south-facing sign captures a whole lot more traffic. It sees, more people see it. The north-facing sign is illegible until you get really close to it, and seems to be much less useful as an advertising device. So I would agree with most, with much of John's suggestions about leaving the south-facing one as the primary advertising sign and adjusting the north-facing one so that it's not interfering with the residents' enjoyment of their homes.
Well, I agree with what all the other commissioners have been saying. I do think, though, we should follow the suggestion of the staff, which is to issue an order to initiate an action to modify the existing permit. Now, I think that we're going to need samples, or you need examples, rather, of what the reduced situation would look like if it's in deep red, before we could agree to anything like that. But we need to start this process, and I think by initiating an, an action to modify the existing permit, we push the action to go, we push something going ahead, and I think that's what we need to do.
Well, I agree with most of all the comments of the other commissioners, and I, I wanted to add that, to me, it seems that the ambient light levels would maybe a more appropriate measure, and I, I'm not, I'm not sure how the, the, well, the process is through measuring with foot candles, and I think that would be a more appropriate measure going forward as opposed to what's being measured now, which I guess is nits, and that's what it says on the specs for the pucks. I believe that's candela's per meter squared or some such thing. Way over my head. In any event, in the evening, when the fog, you know, I've been looking at the sign many times, when the fog comes in, it just is this glowing mass, and there's, there's ambient light that is way greater than any Siebel sign ever was. And I think I agree that, and it possibly could be measured against another existing sign nearby. It seems that everyone is pointing to the Hilton Garden Inn, which, in my opinion, is pretty bright, so that might be one way to go as, as a measure as to what is acceptable in this case. I also definitely agree with separating the north and the south. I think that's an excellent idea. And I, I believe, in, in my opinion, that it is, it does qualify as a potential nuisance, and I'm, I am concerned about if we do not move forward, that things will not, feet will not be held to the fire. And I, and I really, I think that art.com and the staff can still, can still work something out, so I'm, I am very hopeful that that, that that could happen while the proceeding, you know, while this is proceeding, so. I'm not sure we have a sort of consensus to, as to whether to proceed or to... I'm sorry, the public. No, I'm, I'm sorry, the public comment's closed. So.
This will be so brief, and I.
All right.
And I really appreciate the exception to the policy.
I have to reopen the public comment. Is that, is that something that's possible to do?
I'll keep it to less than a minute.
I think it's within your discretion. If you want to take some time for a brief public comment.
Okay, I'll reopen the public comment for you.
Thank you, thank you very much. I appreciate you guys' comments, particularly your consideration. The words that concern me are, let's experiment with, let's test. You know, again, I, one thing that I'll also highlight is, nobody suggested just putting up a barrier. Almost like headlights recessed inside of your reflective shield. They can play with the light all they want. I would also highlight that if you dim a very big light, it's still going to be an intrusion. You know, it's impacted our view, it's impacting my sleep. But ultimately, could we also look into just putting up a shield that will block the light from the north sign and shadow our building from whatever they want to do? And then you guys can experiment all you want.
That was one of the.
That was one of the things that we mentioned.
Thank you.
Okay, now reclose the public comment. And I also, I agree that the light is intrinsically piercing. So I think that is another finding that could be made. And certainly, the, the potential for property value decreasing is also, so, comment?
City staff would like to make one more point before you decide what to do. If we move forward with enforcement adopting the order, it will require staff to pursue simultaneous actions, preparing for the adjudicatory hearing on November 1st, while also continuing to explore settlement options. We just want to make the commissioners aware that it will be an expensive proposition to move on dual tracks at the same time.
And so if we decide to continue this item and.
If you decide to continue and have the parties continue to try to work something out until the next planning commission meeting of October 28th, I believe is the date. We could, is it the 28th?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth. We could then, on the 25th, decide whether or not to adopt the order. And then set a special meeting for a nuisance abatement hearing. Or you can set it tonight at November 1st, and have us march on two tracks at the same time.
I am concerned about the expense and the staff time involved in this. And I think that we have said pretty clearly what our concerns are. And I think that art.com's representatives probably have a pretty good idea of what may or may not be acceptable, and what should be considered. So, I mean, with that consideration, I would sort of favor putting it over one more time with those directions. We're not going to back off. But in order to avoid inordinate expense for everybody involved, I would really rather see it resolved in another manner.
I would really want to see it resolved, though.
I would, I would also support a continuance only be, for a different reason, but only because I was not personally able to view the sign in its dimmed fashion. So, you know, I would really like the opportunity to be able to do that.
You know, I've done some research on LED signs, and there are capabilities to reduce them to 4% during the evening. And, so I'm not really certain exactly what's going on with the pucks that they're using, but I think that some more research needs to be, needs to be made. So, here it is before us. We can.
Well, how does staff feel about the postponement to the next meeting?
Maru?
They tend to be positive.
One of our recommendations, one is that's one of the options before you, is continuing it to the next.
Do you recommend that?
Our recommendation is to issue the order and modify the conditions.
I'm concerned that time is passing and people are not sleeping. There's that.
Well, I really believe that if we tried what I proposed, I think that's a workable solution. I don't think this is an experiment that's going to fail. And it's certainly going to provide much more relief for people. So I would be willing to continue this. But at the same time, I want them to do something. I want them to take action soon.
His attorney wants to speak.
No, I'm sorry, we're done. Please come forward.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just as a point of order on the last issue of the process, if I could comment, a continuance would be extremely beneficial, and I think it's constructive from art.com's perspective. We have indeed, as Ms. Donaldson mentioned, heard a lot of technical information, a lot of policy information, a lot of options. And I'm not qualified to evaluate the technical issues. And blending the different perspectives that each of you has enunciated tonight, I think is possible. It's cheap, it's fast, and I think we could make a lot of progress. And if you're not satisfied with the progress, you can order a hearing held anytime you feel like it. But I think, given the level of good faith cooperation to date and voluntary measures on art.com's perspective, I think we have a very feasible opportunity to reach an agreement that's satisfactory to you. So a continuance would, I think, be very constructive. Thank you.
Can I ask the attorney if there, if it is set for this, for a modification or revocation hearing, and it does appear that progress has been made, what is the process? Is there a process for saying, for stopping in?
Well, in mid-street, is the next meeting October 25th?
Yes.
You meet once a month? Well, then, the normal protocol would be, you wouldn't be able to interrupt it then, until you got to the 25th. And then when it got to the 25th, you could consider whether or not to proceed at that point, or whether to continue it there. But very likely, there would have been a lot of time and energy and money spent by all parties, both art.com and by the city, and possibly by the residents, to present some, their views and their evidence as to what ought to happen. So, but before then, you would have an order of the planning commission to proceed, and no one person could act to direct the parties to proceed differently until the planning commission spoke again. Did I answer the question, I hope?
I feel confused.
No, I'm sorry, okay. Well, I understood the question. I saw some faces that maybe it wasn't understood. I understood the question to be, if you ordered the revocation proceeding for October 25th, could, before that date, a decision be made not to proceed with the revocation proceeding?
No, we had it, it looks like it would be calendared for November 1st for a special meeting.
Oh, well, I'm sorry, then I guess I misunderstood the facts. So, well, on October 25th.
It's our regular meeting.
At a regular meeting, you could take some action as to what to do on November 1st, but you could not, before you met again, determine what to do on November 1st. Does that answer the question?
Well, so if we decide to go ahead with a action to modify the permit at this meeting today, and during the intervening month, arrive at a solution that everybody's happy with, would we then abandon?
They would come to you, the parties would come to you and say, we have a solution. We don't want to proceed with that revocation proceeding. And they could present that to you instead, because they would then have basically something they would be asking for approval of, rather than the proceedings. And you could, if it were, you could then consider that at that, at that meeting.
So incur a lot of expense if we proceed with this action to modify the existing permit?
You likely would unless the parties themselves came up to a resolution that they decided they were comfortable with and wouldn't have to, they wouldn't have to proceed with those expenses any further. But it wouldn't be finalized until it were presented to you.
So we could proceed with issuing this order at the soonest possible date, which it looks like would be November 1st. And also agendize the item in, at our regular October meeting, so that if something happened in the interim, we could also rescind?
That sounds like a feasible option, yes. But before October 25th, certainly there would be quite a bit of activity.
Madam Chairman, as a point of order again, our request is that you continue tonight's hearing. Tonight is for the purpose of deciding whether to pull the trigger on evidentiary hearings, in effect, the formal prosecutorial defense aspect of a permit revocation proceeding. Our request is that you give us another month to do what we've done to date on a rush basis. Only we have, we have plenty of time in which to attain an improved solution that addresses the technical factors and the policy factors that you've enunciated tonight for the first time. I think there's plenty of time for us to meet. As we have done tonight, we would come back to you with a proposal worked out with staff. I think you've seen from staff's perspective that we are close. There's not a vast gap between the substantive policy positions. Because if you, if you order the hearing now, what we have to do, these are trials, administrative trials. We put on evidence, we cross-examine witnesses, it's a big hoo-ha, and it's very expensive and time-consuming. It's completely a procedural exercise unrelated to working out the substance of a simple agreement. And if we could instead take this intervening interval and work on the substance of a new proposal that addresses your concerns voiced tonight, I think we can make satisfactory process, progress, bring it to you well in advance of October 26th. And at that point, you can decide, at that next hearing, you can decide whether the progress has been sufficient. But the bureaucratic overlay to date has been burdensome. To order a hearing just ratchets up the administrative hoo-ha of not solving the problem, but doing a process. I think we can solve the problem in the time we have before the next hearing, if you'll continue tonight's hearing and not order the next revocation evidentiary hearing. Thank you.
Staff does concur with that request that we would continue the hearing, because it will be very expensive for the city to prepare for that hearing with a full evidentiary hearing, and give the chance, give a chance for a settlement to be reached before the October 25th meeting. And if one can't be met, then we proceed at a later date with, you adopt the order that night, we proceed a later date with the administrative nuisance abatement action.
In other words, you'd spend a lot of money before the next meeting date.
Correct.
And it would be November 1st if it was to be actually moved, the resolution to move forward?
If on October 25th, if you didn't meet a resolution, I don't think it would be November 1st, no. Because you'd have to adopt the resolution that night, and you'd have to give a minimum notice of, I believe, a couple of weeks before you could have that hearing. You could set a specially date hearing for those days out. Or you can do, as Mr. Segal previously alluded to, do a dual-track, set the hearing for November 1st now, adopt the order, and also put it on the agenda for October 25th for a status update to see if something's happened. But my concern, from staff's concern from that perspective, is you are going to go through a lot of resources preparing for that hearing on November 1st.
So right now, we've got a condition of approval that mandates that both signs have to operate the same. If we wanted to decouple those signs for this one-month period, how do we procedurally go about that tonight?
Well, from my, from staff's perspective, we would talk to art.com tomorrow and get going on the settlement discussions. And if we're able to come to some conclusion of something that we think is workable, taking into the commissioners' members, I would implore them to start that before October 25th, so we can provide examples of whether or not that works. Because we don't want to come back to you with a hypothetical on October 25th. I think that's what you're asking. It won't be binding on any parties at that point, until something's approved by the planning commission. But at least you'll have visual data to analyze, making your decision.
Even though it would be against the conditions, that would be fine. We would just skip that for now, because they're supposed to be the same.
Correct. We would enter into some sort of agreement where we would give them some leeway to experiment with those, with decoupling, if that's what you're talking about.
Okay.
There's nothing prohibiting them from, I mean, the decoupling, yes, but from decreasing luminosity and changing the colors to a deep red at night, there's nothing prohibiting from that in their permit.
Or shielding, or, yeah, any of the options. Okay.
Yeah. So the existing condition does say the two signs may be different colors at the same time. I don't see anything requiring them to be the same color, or the same luminosity, if that's even the right terminology, luminosi, lumos, whatever the correct terminology of this is. But there's nothing requiring that for both signs at the same time.
Okay.
De facto, they're uncoupled now.
Any further questions?
Are there any further questions? No.
So how can we get some sort of an assurance that some action will be taken soon? Like within the next week? Is there any way that we can mandate that?
Well, I think.
I gathered that that question was addressed partly to me. I can commit that art.com will reopen a dialogue with city staff tomorrow, and work diligently and rapidly toward whatever solution can be reached. I have four pages of notes from tonight, and, you know, we know a lot more now than we knew coming into this hearing.
I'm sorry, go ahead. It's all, thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't know if the question was addressed to me or not.
It was kind of an open question to whoever.
I think it's been answered, and what I would have said to you if it were addressed to me was, it's, you just have to, it's your power of persuasion and conveyance to art.com of the seriousness of your concerns, if you are looking for something that, from a commitment from them, as opposed to anything that you could do that would be legally binding upon them. But if you're serious about potentially opening up revocation proceedings now or at another point, you would convey that message.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone this for another month.
Do we have any seconds?
Which is what staff is recommending.
Do we have substitute motions?
I would move that we proceed to initiate an action to modify the existing permit.
Was there a second for the first motion?
There was not a second.
Okay, I thought I heard one, but obviously I didn't.
And we have to do one or the other.
Yes.
I'm sensing we need maybe a little more discussion here, because I don't.
Yeah, it's possible.
I don't, I think, um, I'm, okay, I'm going to just think out loud here. I'm wondering if it's even possible, or if there's any interest for having a, I mean, for scheduling a special meeting in the nearer future than our next meeting, than our next regular meeting.
I think that's as soon as it's possible. I'm not totally sure, but we did go over schedules, and.
Okay.
That was about as soon as it could happen.
The oct, over 23rd?
The oct.
So we have a special meeting of?
Maru, I'm not sure if you're up on schedules, but.
Yeah, I mean, if we can work out the schedule, we can hold a special meeting. It's up to the commissioners.
We could?
Yes.
Sooner?
Yes, of course.
Would you all be?
So we could have.
Ameable to?
Absolutely.
A week, two weeks? A meeting in two weeks? Is that possible?
Is that enough notice?
Yeah. Enough notice?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Well, that's an option.
I think that's a good one.
I mean, I think, so what I'm, if I can finish the thought, what I'm thinking is we could, we could try to schedule a special meeting, say, two weeks out is kind of the timeline I was thinking. At that point, we could consider a settlement, if there is one. Well, we could even, we could even issue the order tonight, if we felt that was appropriate. And at the second, at the special meeting, we could accept a settlement if there was one. It's only two weeks out, so it's not, it's not as far out. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't cost as much time. I mean, it's not as much time preparing for the hearing, is what I'm thinking, if a settlement is able to be reached in that short amount of time.
I think you offer a good compromise, that I would be willing, if we had a special meeting two weeks out, to postpone this for that two-week period. That gives people two weeks to.
Get it together.
Get things together and show us that this can be resolved.
It's not ideal to me. I mean, it's not an ideal solution, but I just think we've had two motions and no seconds, and so I'm just, you know, I'm trying to get us somewhere.
Would that be a motion, then?
Sure. So, okay, so I'm, I guess, how do we, can I make it all as one motion that we will, that we will issue this, okay, let me read the recommendations.
Decision to initiate action.
So, it's.
To revoke or modify.
Yeah. I'm just trying to find the language here, so.
Can I just ask one question? In the resolution, it says, as I see it, is it the last page of the packet, it mentions October 25th for the hearing on the revocation proceeding, but I've heard it mentioned being November 1st?
Uh, there's.
Is my packet out of date then?
No, that was in, that was in the staff.
Okay. So, I just want to make sure that the right, if there's a resolution adopted, we need a good record as to which resolution's being adopted.
Right. We would be, to the extent there was going to be a hearing ordered, we were, subsequent to the agenda going out, we realized that November 1st would really work better to hold just a separate item that evening as opposed to it being a part of their normal agenda when there's a bunch of other items as well.
Okay. And the commissioners then have that updated resolution. So, if you were Commissioner Moss to make that motion to initiate the revocation proceedings, it would be for proceedings on November 1st?
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Just wanted to make sure the record's clear.
Right.
Proceedings, two weeks from this date, not November 1st.
No. So, what my motion was, so what my motion was going to be was to, I was going to move this resolution to order the initiation of an action to modify the existing major sign permit with the understanding that we would try to schedule a special meeting approximately two weeks from tonight.
Okay.
At which meeting, we could accept a settlement if one was available to us. And if it's not available to us, we can cancel the meeting. I mean, we, you know, cancel the meeting for lack of a quorum, we cannot show up, you know, whatever.
Set.
Yeah, I mean, that would be, or you could, or the motion could be to set the special meeting in order to consider that and then you could decide at the special meeting both if there's a resolution and also as to whether to proceed with the revocation proceedings. Or you could just decide to set the special meeting now to consider all of it and determine when to set a revocation proceeding if that's the choice to go to now. So, any of those options are available.
So, schedule's time.
That sounds good.
We'd do it on the same day.
So, for the record, that would
Two weeks from today.
That would be approximately the 11th of October.
It's the 11th of October. Is that?
It's okay with me.
Can everyone make that meeting?
Yes, October 11th.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So, I think then I will move, I mean, do we need, we need to move to schedule a special meeting?
Need to move to schedule a special meeting
For October 11th. In, at which we will consider a settlement of this art.com matter if it's available to us, or we will, or we will also consider the order of the initiation of an action to modify the existing sign permit.
In two weeks. Is that possible?
What you're doing is possible. We just want to add one more point that it's not going to save a whole lot of money by just continuing it for two weeks. We're gonna have to, both parties are gonna have to start gearing up right now for the administrative trial. And that's fine, but you need to be made aware of that. Both, both parties agree that if this is set for November 1st with a special meeting a couple of weeks from now, we wouldn't really have the resources or ability to prepare for that trial on November 1st, starting to
So, but the motion I just made was not, was not to issue this order right now. It was to do it
At the special
In two weeks, if there's no settlement. So.
Then the hearing could be
At the special meeting. Later than You would decide whether to issue the order if there was no settlement.
Right.
Correct.
So, in essence, this is continuing this until the special meeting?
It's continuing it for two weeks rather than, rather than a month, yeah.
Which I think is a good compromise. I would second that motion.
Yes, all right, well, I guess, oh.
Point of clarification. Are you initiating the order tonight? Or are you gonna put that over for two weeks and decide in two weeks to initiate the order if you don't have a settlement?
Correct.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Giving art.com two weeks to get it worked out.
Yes.
Yes. So, we have a motion and a second?
Yep. Should I say the real call?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Aye.
Commissioner Moss?
Aye.
Commissioner Sherman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Cardozo?
Aye.
Chair Comerly?
Aye.
Motion is passed.
Forgot.
Oh, you forgot Commissioner Tam.
I'm so sorry, Commissioner Tam.
Aye.
Okay, thank you all so much for coming and telling us all the things that have been happening with you. And art.com, please work it out with staff and make it happen, feet to fire.
Fire.
Two weeks. Thank you all.
One color, very dim, shielded.
Well, next.
His request for, not the next item, but then one after that.
Okay. Okay. Can do that.
Because they have all these kids here for this.
Well, there's, this is now. I'd like to take a five-minute break and We're gonna restart the meeting. So, in the, in the interest of bedtimes, I wanted to get a, get an idea of who, who in the audience is here for what. So, the modifications to the landscape plan at 45th and the, the Escuela Pilinguel. Okay. I think, so I'd like to move the modifications to landscape plan up and take that next.
Does anyone, anyone's here for the tree removal?
Yes.
The tree, yeah. I was more, we're a little bit more worried about the kids there, so.
Okay.
Yeah. That was the, that was the idea. So, with that, staff, Maru, thank you.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I need to recuse myself from this item on the agenda because I live within 500 feet of the 45th Street item on the agenda, as well as the item that follows that, which is the pathway. I am a property owner at 45th Street and I will be stepping down from the dais, but I will be staying in the room and participating in the public comment, so.
Okay. We'll, we'll switch this one up and then we'll go back to the schedule.
Good evening, Chair Comerly. I'm sorry, I can't see your, pronounce your name quite right. I'll get it for one of these days.
Pretty good.
And Commissioner Manubis. So, this is.
No, it's not working.
Not sure what's going on here. Okay, I can't even get out of it now. All right, let me try it again. Bit of a background, on the June of this year, the commission considered an amendment to a previously approved use permit and design review to allow changes in the landscape plan at 1051 45th Street. The commission continued the item to allow time for the applicant and the other interested parties to address the issue of increasing planting areas on the property. Staff met with the applicant, the landscape designer, as well as a current tenant, Todd Britt, and as well as an immediate neighbor, Mark Lemere, on July 30th. Subsequent to this meeting, the applicant took various options that were discussed at that meeting and made a few changes. So, this is the June, this is the landscape plan that you saw at your June meeting. And the red stars essentially indicate things that they wanted to legalize and the blue dots were things that they were hoping to change in their existing property. So, three main things have happened as a result of the July meeting. First, along the perimeter, they have replaced what used to be rock and mulch into a ground cover. Second that has happened is they've increased the vegetable garden area and that was on the request of one of the tenants. And the third was on the front yard. So, what they have done is that they used to have this crushed rock here that has been replaced by green cover and same thing, crushed rock here and that has been replaced with green cover. And they have also proposed to break up the two brick pavers, which used to be here, into stepping stones as well. So, these were the three main changes. The plan also includes all the ground cover that are being proposed, are bay friendly plants and shrubs along the western and eastern property line instead of crushed rock. Perforated weed control fabric will be installed instead of plastic sheets and it provides for drip irrigation. There are two conditions of approval that staff is recommending. One is that the completion of proposed landscape plan be done within three months and that there be six-month reviews of the property for the next two years. I'd just like to mention that the applicant is requesting that the completion, that they given, they be given more time for completion of the landscape plan. Instead of three months, they're requesting six to nine months and I will let the applicant talk a little bit about that. So, with that, our recommendation is to approve the amendment to the use permit, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. So, that's my presentation. If you have any questions from me, I would be happy to answer. The applicant is here as well as Todd Britt and Mark Lemere. These were the two individuals that we had the meeting with. They're both, both are present.
Thank you, Maru. This is a public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry, the applicant. Please, come forward.
The only thing I'm asking is for the extension because our daughter is having a baby next month in October and November I'm having surgery, so it doesn't allow us enough time to do the things. And then with the winter approaching and, you know, the rainy season coming, it's going to be hard. We do it on our days off because we both work full-time. And we, I just went yesterday to look at the plants that are, we are putting like, the one that I went looking for is carmel creeper and they had only two. So, I asked them, will there be more coming in? And they said they don't order that many because the perennial and the winter is coming, so we might not be able to get all the plants by December. And so, we are just asking for more extension. So, we'll have the plants and if I put them immature ones, they'll die with the frost if the frost comes. But we'll have it. We want to get it over with and do it.
Okay. Is that, thank you. Does it, do we have any questions?
What kind of extension are you? Yeah, I do. What kind of extension are you?
What kind of extension are you asking for? How much time?
Maybe till, be done till April.
Because that's a good spring, you know, the good plants come in.
So we'll probably be done sooner than that, but, you know, and let you know. But if we are not done, I mean, that's why. I don't want to keep on coming to this hearing and...
Okay. Are there any other questions? The applicant? No? Okay. This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come forward. It's open.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Todd Britt and I'm one of the tenants on the property. I helped develop the plan. I'm fully supportive of it. I also support the extension. I did know about it this evening. I would like to request that we get the beds in the garden in the back sooner than six to nine months, but the rest of it I'm fine with. That's it.
Okay. Oops, I need the clock. Is there anyone else?
Hi, I'm Mark Lemare, next-door neighbor. We also worked on this together. The only, I think it's a great plan. If there's gonna be an extension, I just want to have the two-years, six-months check-up to start after the completion of the project. It seems like a no-brainer, but I thought I'd say it. Other than that, I'm pretty happy with Al's all gone. Government in action.
Thank you. Is there anyone, anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment section. Commissioners?
I would move approval of that with amended condition of approval granting extension until, what, April? With the condition that the beds be put in before December, before the original timeline and that the six-months check-in proceed from the completion. If you're completed before April, then whenever the six-month starts.
I second that motion.
Great. Let's have a vote.
Do we have a date in April?
April 1st.
Can we, can we just condition that the applicant notify staff when it's, when it's complete within nine months and then?
Nine months.
Well, no.
Wait, wait, nine, was it, isn't, I thought they were asking for nine months to complete it. I'm missing.
I would say the April 31st because of the rains. That would be...
April 30th?
Thirty, thirty, I'm sorry. Right.
It'll never happen.
Okay, it'll never happen then, yeah, 30th. And just knowing the rains. And I, I would also like to add, just a comment, that the Carmel Creeper that you can't find is actually probably not gonna do so well there because it grows very wide and you have, that's a very narrow spot, so I just wanted to give you that note. In any event, I would second that motion.
I believe it was already seconded by Commissioner Sherman.
All right, then I guess we can take a vote.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Aye.
Commissioner Moss?
Aye.
Commissioner Sherman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Cardoza?
Aye.
Chair Comerly?
Aye.
Five ayes, the motion is approved.
And that does allow for switching out the Carmel Creeper with another suitable ground cover.
Yeah. Please, that would allow for switching out the ground cover for a more suitable one in the front. The Carmel Creeper would recommend it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Let them know.
Thank you for working it out.
Yeah, it's very nice to see everyone working it out. Yay. The next item on the agenda, I will need to recuse myself because I am within 500 feet.
Are we going back to the tree removal now? Is that?
Yeah.
Yeah? Oh, okay.
Thank you.
So, do we have to go get Kyrie out of timeout? Oh, yeah. Wait, I don't know where, oh, there she is. Yeah.
Commissioner Tan? We changed the agenda, so this is the Ocean Street item, so you're, you can... We put, we moved Ocean Street ahead of the Escuela.
Okay. So as a bit of a background, the council approved demolition of an existing residence and construction of two detached residences in April of 2007 on Ocean Avenue. The approval then got extended till April 2011 and the applicant then filed a building permit application of, in January 2011. The building permit was approved and ready to be issued but expired on July 18th, 2012. The applicant let the building permit expire because he's experiencing some problems with the title issues on the property. However, he does intend to apply for a new building permit as soon as the title issues are resolved and that's why we are continuing with this item of tree removal, which was, by the way, he submitted before the building permit expired. So, this is their site plan. There are two units, one fronts Ocean Avenue and the other one fronts Peabody Lane. And the tree in question is the one in red that is to be removed. It's a nine-inch Raymond Ash Tree and the reason it needs to be removed is because it is directly in front of the proposed driveway, which is right here. There is another, another tree further down and that tree will remain. The UFO, the Urban Forestry Ordinance, requires that any tree removal application be considered by the commission. This requirement was passed in April of 2010 after this project was approved and therefore the tree removal at that time was not included. The UFO requires the planting of replacement trees of equal or cumulative diameter to the trees to be removed. The ordinance also says that when replacement tree cannot match the diameter of the tree to be removed due to site conditions, the commission must require that the replacement planting of several trees of equal diameter to the tree being removed be placed. This tree, as I mentioned, is a nine-inch diameter and if you replant a 24-box tree, that's about 1.7 inches in diameter, so you need to plant five replacement trees. However, there are no empty tree wells on Ocean Avenue and therefore staff is recommending that the applicant replace five trees in other parts of the city at locations to be determined by the Public Works Department. In addition to the placement of the trees, the applicant must also pay the assessed value of the tree to be removed. The applicant's arborist provided a report which determined the value to be $340. This was found to be acceptable by our city arborists. So staff is recommending approval for the tree removal, subject to installation of five 24-inch box trees in tree wells in other parts of the city that will be determined by the Department of Public Works, pay the replacement value fee of $340, and, and that the encroachment permit for the tree removal not be issued prior to the issuance of building permit for the two new residential units. This is to ensure that the tree is not moved before the actual building permit or the work will begin. So that is, that concludes my presentation. If there are any questions, I would be happy to answer.
Maru, when you say install the box trees and empty tree wells in other parts of the city, is, is that including with renovated soil or structural soil or any of that?
Yes.
So that whole planting regimen would have to be paid for by the applicant?
Correct, correct. So if you look at your resolution, the last page, let's see. The first one actually, the first condition says the tree species and soil conditions under which the trees are to be installed will be determined by the city arborist. So depending on the species, the soil conditions vary in terms of total volume of soil.
Okay, there, there also, there was in one part of the report, the, the arborist recommended replacing the tree in front of the unit and if they're gonna be redoing the driveway, I don't know that there's a reason that they shouldn't be able to put a tree in front.
There won't be any place, that was a miscalculation. If you have the driveway, that there, and, and the existing tree wells on the either side, there won't be enough spacing to add another tree.
It looks like there's over six feet.
Six feet between...
Looks like there's six feet between the driveway flare and the property line. Not over six feet, but six feet.
Well, the city arborist is here, we can talk, we can ask her.
Sure. She's not, she's, yes. Hi.
Can you repeat the question?
When I looked at the site and looked at the site plan, it appears that there's enough space to put a tree well just to the west of the new driveway, that there's six feet to the property line. And it appeared that the next tree down the street was kind of far away and it would be a nice spacing if there was a tree there.
Okay. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm not very good looking at these plans. I mean, you just have to supply enough soil volume for that tree to actually grow. So, so, I mean...
Could you speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry. You just would have to apply, supply enough soil volume for that tree to actually grow. There's no point in planting a tree if you can't supply the, the tree at least 600 cubic feet of rootable soil for, for healthy root growth. So, so, okay, so existing...
We could maybe calculate it because it's a six-by-four space. So that's 24 square feet.
Okay, that's 24 square feet and we're talking about 600 square feet for a small tree, a small stature tree. If we, if we talk about large trees, we're talking about in excess of, you know, 2,000 cubic feet of rootable soil. And, and I do understand that those, those, those calculations are hard. We usually don't get those, but we just want to give the tree as much as possible. So if we're only giving the tree 24 cubic feet of rootable soil, probably...
Well, 24, that's 24 square feet, so I don't know, I don't, we don't know the, the third dimension, which is the depth, right?
Yeah, so it would be like, you know, times three, you know, probably down to three, three feet, so, so that's like, you know, 24 times three.
Seventy-two?
Yeah, so, so that's, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not the, the best, it's not the best spot. But if you, but if you use structural soil under the, under the pavement and, and you can, you can absolutely gain soil volume by doing that.
And aren't most of the existing tree wells in the city similarly small dimension and you'd have to do the excavation anyway?
Yeah, and that's why we say like, the, I mean, that's why we have so many problems. And we're saying we don't want to plant trees like that anymore. So when we do plant a tree in the ground, we want to make sure that, that those roots are not going to lift up the pavement in the future. So if you want to put, like, you know, prepare a whole huge space with, with structural soil and, and get, and, you know, drain rock underneath the pavement and everything, that would be wonderful. So it's just about how much soil you're gonna give the, give the tree. Should I answer that question?
Thank you.
I have a few questions. I'm curious what, so what is it in the, is there something in, in the zoning code that required the, the city council to approve the demolition in the first place of the, of the house that was there?
Yes. We do, we have an ordinance where if you're removing a single-family residence, you cannot remove, you cannot demolish a single family, a single-family residence unless you have replacement, unless you have a use permit for replacement structures. So this house is still there.
Okay. All right, okay. I, I think I get it. So that was on appeal to the city council, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it was originally approved by the city council, the project, because the demolition of the residential, existing residential building required city council approval.
I see.
Therefore, the whole project required city council approval.
Okay.
And the demolition can't occur until they've actually received a building permit for the replacement structure.
Okay. And then, so we just heard from the city arborist and then, so I'm curious, who, who was the arborist that repaired the, the report? That was a different person?
Yeah, the, the arborist report that's attached to staff report is the applicant's arborist. And that report was peer-reviewed by the city arborist.
Okay, so that, that, that is the procedure that's established in the, what is it, the Urban Forestry Ordinance?
That is not the proc, you mean the peer-review?
Yes.
The peer-review is not yet a part of the UFO. We, we wanted to make sure that the assessed value, that the applicant's arborist was suggesting was accurate. So we, so I just basically asked Molly to make sure that $340 was accurate amount.
So what, what, then I'm not understanding, so what, what's the procedure as far as the, the assessment of the tree that's established in the UFO? The applicant can, can hire their own arborist and it doesn't have to be peer-reviewed?
Right now, UFO does not require peer-review of arborist reports that are provided by the applicant.
Okay. And then, my last question is, so is it the, the city's position that the demolition permit vested the entitlements? Because it, it seems to me that the, there are entitlements which have expired and a, and a building permit which was issued but has now expired, so I'm curious about that.
The entitlements have not expired because the building permit was issued, so that keeps the entitlements in existence in perpetuity.
Well, so that's my question about vesting.
Yes, that is correct.
So, but it, so this is, this is actually, this is a very important, this is a critical issue for me, so I'm trying to understand. So is, is, but, is the way Buzz just explained, is the way Commissioner Cardoza just explained it, is, is that accurate? That it was, or maybe, maybe the city attorney can explain to me the vesting rights of this project?
Yeah.
Well, from what I understand, the building permit has been issued and I believe some amount of work has been done, so the applicant would maintain that he has a vested right to continue on with the project.
So the, the, but the building permit hasn't been acted upon, so the expiration of that building permit doesn't effectively render it...
It's not my understanding that it has expired.
Well, it, the staff report says it has.
It has been...
The building permit has expired?
But they did pull a building permit. Conditions say that it pulled a building permit, you're past it.
That's what the permit says? Well, I'm being advised that the, by the planning director, that the conditions provide that essentially, once the building permit is, is issued, that essentially they've acted upon the, the conditional use permit. But the fact that it's now expired adds a little twist to it that, sitting here, I can't necessarily answer your question.
Okay, all right. Because I, I, I mean, I had that question as I reviewed these documents, so I, I, you know, I did a little research on my own and reviewed, when I think it's, what is it, AVCO v Southern California Commission or something? You know, where the three conditions for vesting are a building permit, performing substantial work, and incurring substantial liabilities, and I just didn't see that here, so.
I brought up the same question to Charlie and his answer to me was that, once the building permit was issued, it guaranteed the rights in perpetuity of the zoning, of the planning approval.
That's my understanding.
He does have to apply for a new building permit and pay all the fees, but the, but the planning approval stays in place. Is that true, Charlie? I mean...
That's my understanding.
Did you have a different reading?
Well, I have a different interpretation, but I don't, I mean...
I mean, I thought, like you did, but Charlie told me no, it goes the other way. I mean, certainly I think the, the standards that, that are set in AVCO, I think arguably had been met. The, the twist that I don't know of any case that's, obviously we'd have to go research it, is when you've had a situation where the building permit is expired.
So, is your concern that if we say that it's okay to remove the tree when he gets a building permit, that we're somehow extending his entitlements by doing that?
Well, not so much that, it's, it's actually that I, I feel, I mean, I, I don't, I don't see the vested rights of the entitlements here. So, so when I look at this, I see entitlements that have expired and a building permit that is expired. And so then, you know, we're approving a tree removal permit for something which would still need, you know, which has no entitlements.
I don't know that that's necessarily correct. I mean, I think there is, again, we go back to the situation that you do have somebody who's pulled, pulled a building permit, has, you know, expended money and reliance on that. Again, the only, you know, a building permit is a ministerial, you know, issuance of a building permit is a ministerial act, so the fact that it's, it's expired merely means that they need to, you know, come back and... they need to, you know, come back and reapply, and they might have to comply with different codes that might be in effect, that change some of the details of the, you know, of their plans. But I still think the underlying principles in the AVCO decision have probably already been met. So, you know, my inclination is, is that it probably has vested already, and the fact that the permit expired is probably inconsequential, so. The other, I guess the other thing is Charlie's just showing me the actual permit, the condition of approval of the permit language. Let's see. Well, that talks about it expiring if an application for a building permit has not been filed and fees paid, so they've already submitted and complied with that condition, arguably. So, the permit has not expired.
So, where do we stand now, then?
Public hearing.
I mean, is it...
I don't think the permit, I mean, again, I'm not aware of any decisions where you had a permit after somebody has arguably perfected their permit under the standard that's in this AVCO decision that Commissioner Moss has referenced, where then, just because the building permit, again, which is a ministerial permit, has expired, that that somehow unravels their vested right to proceed. So, my view, sitting here, is that I believe the permit has been vested.
That they do have...
They have the right to proceed with the building.
Okay. The next item on our, will be a public comment. Oh, excuse me. Does the applicant want to speak first? Made a mistake there.
Oh, he's here.
Good evening, my name's Jim Treeman, and I've been helping the applicant get this project through for the last couple of years.
Did he raise the microphone?
There he is.
Thank you.
There, is that better? Do I need to repeat my name? But we're happy to comply with the staff's recommendations, so that's all I'd say. Unless you have any questions for me.
Public comment? Sorry.
I'm Richard Ambro, and I live at 1264 64th Street, one block from the tree in question. I'm a little confused as to the status of the project. We talked two weeks ago, and I got pretty much the same picture, other than the viability of his permit. Anyway, I'm also concerned about the, not only the trees along the curb, but the trees on the property. There's a very large, mature eucalyptus tree, and several large, mature fruit trees in the back, and some other landscaping that I find very interesting, and they're good for the environment, they're good for the wildlife, the birds like it, and I don't know what, what's involved, or what's going to happen to those. Does he have to apply for a permit to demolish or remove those trees on the property itself, on the private property? Or can he just bulldoze it? Of course, the, right after this item, or eventually, we're going to start talking about the, the working on an urban forest ordinance, and it's going to be taken up again by the city council in a few weeks. And I'm, I'm going to push for inclusion of not only trees that belong to the city on city land, but also on private property, that they are, the largest trees in the city tend to be on private land. That's not true for the park, but, and I would like to see some protection for the large, mature trees as well. And we don't have a chance to do that if you act on this, on this motion at this point. I was hoping it would be postponed for a couple of, a couple of weeks or months. So, yes, exactly. So, I don't know what's going to happen to those trees, but I am concerned by them. I actually thought that the issue was the, was not the city trees on along the curb, but the large eucalyptus trees on the property itself. Can I get some clarification on that?
City's ordinances do not impact trees on private property.
Well, I'm going to push for it, that's the thing.
Well, they do not, and so currently, the city does have any authority over those trees.
I understand, I understand.
And the eucalyptus tree in the front is going to remain?
I'm sorry?
The eucalyptus tree in front of Ocean Avenue, that's going to remain.
It's going to remain, okay. Well, I was, I wasn't clear on that, thank you.
The plan for this site has already been approved previously by the city council, which includes the landscape plan. So, whatever the council approved is what would happen, and according to Ms. Desai, that means that one of the eucalyptus trees would remain.
But as with human beings, you can always get a reprieve or a pardon, so, thank you.
Any further public comment? Declare the public meeting closed.
I had a couple of questions. So, as far as the replacement trees, is that done, or is that going to be accomplished by the contractor, or is that done by the city? That's one question I have. And the second question is, is there a time limit or a timeframe within which those replacement trees need to be put someplace?
The trees will be replaced by the applicant, and it is the city that will tell him where the trees are going to go, and what species, and what soil conditions, so the actual work will be done by the applicant and not the city. The conditions do not have a timeframe for that, but I do expect that before, before there is a TCO for the buildings, I would want to see the replacement work of all five trees done.
Okay, so then, the time limit is before TCO?
Before TCO of the buildings.
And they cannot remove this tree until they get a new building permit, is that correct?
Right. Till the building permit is issued, they cannot get the tree removal permit or the encroachment permit to remove the tree.
Is there a reason that, is there a reason that it will be the applicant actually doing the work of replacing the trees, rather than public works department staff, or, and then, you know, the applicant paying for the work in some way?
It's more administratively, a little bit more burdensome to have that transaction occur, as opposed to issuing a building permit, or encroachment permit, rather, that has conditions. We have the planning or building, excuse me, public works department issues encroachment permits, you know, on a daily basis, so that's really a process that's set up already, and we can dictate the terms under which they're allowed to get into the city street and, or sidewalks, rather, and dictate the terms of the, you know, the work that needs to be done.
Any other comments? We have a motion to approve?
Vice Chair Cardoza, in reference to the comment made by Commissioner Tan, I would like to recommend that, just for clarification, the condition one, we add that the replacement trees be installed prior to the TCO of the buildings.
For those who don't know, TCO stands for temporary certificate of occupancy.
The resolution also has a condition that says four trees, that should say five trees.
Oh, whoops. That's a typo.
I would move approval with those changes.
I second that.
We have a vote?
All right. Commissioner Donaldson?
Aye.
Commissioner Moss?
No.
Commissioner Sherman?
Aye.
Commissioner Tan?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Cardoza?
Aye.
Four ayes, one no, the motion is approved.
Mr. Ambro, could you sign in over there, please?
These local shares today.
Okay, next item on the agenda, the mid-block pedestrian path at Esquela Bilingüe Internacional.
We have for you a consideration of the design of a mid-block pedestrian path at EBI. Just as a background, the EBI use permit was approved by the city council on May 19th of last year, and the reason why the city council approved it was because the planning commission approved it in March, and on appeal, it went to the council, and then the council approved it. And so, an EBI is a school, an independent school, which gets to pre-K to class eight. And as part of, one of the conditions of the use permit was design and construction of this mid-block pathway connecting 45th Street and 47th Street. And this is the condition of approval. Basically, it outlines the timing and the process of the design and the construction of the path, and we'll come back to it a little bit later. And this is what you saw at the study session in June. This is the path on the eastern, along the eastern property line. It's a 20-foot-wide pedestrian path with a six-foot-wide pathway, which is going to be made of asphalt, and the red is the eight-foot-high wrought iron fence. After some, after taking in the comments at the study session, they presented their final design. It kind of gives you the details of the tree and the plant palette, which I will let their landscape architect talk a little bit more about it, but I would like to highlight a few things. One is that they're proposing a mural along this wall. In addition to that, they have a convex mirror installed in order to address some of the security concerns regarding the kink here. They are also proposing trash receptacles, pet waste bag dispensers, and pedestrian-only signs at the two ends of the pathway. A few meetings were held regarding this issue. A community meeting was held in April of this year, and the key issue was security. And the suggestion was made that construction of gates on either side of the path be installed. At the planning, at the planning commission study session, again, this was a key issue. A number of citizens spoke on it, and the majority of the commissioners who were present were, were okay with, were okay with the gates being installed and the path being closed during the night. The BPAC, or the Bicycle Pedestrian Subcommittee, discussed this item at the June meeting, and the committee, and the subcommittee voted that no gates be installed, and that the security concerns be addressed by removal of the jog in the path. Now, the condition of approval that talks about the process and the design and the construction of the path, and I've highlighted the thing, highlighted the portion that is critical today regarding the gates. And it states that the pathway shall at all times remain open and accessible to the public for pedestrian access only. If security becomes a problem in the future, the city council may require the installation of gates at either end of the path to be locked during nighttime hours and unlocked during the daytime hours, with the exact hours to be specified by the council, and that the applicant shall be responsible for installing, locking, and unlocking any such gates. Given this language of the condition of approval, the gates cannot be required until security concern has been established, at which point, it would be considered by the city council to require such gates. And therefore, the applicant has proposed the final design without the gates. So, that concludes my presentation, and after, after hearing the presentation and receiving public testimony, we recommend approval for this project. If there are any questions, I would be happy to answer.
Could you provide a little clarification on what the BPAC is saying? Were they, they're saying, basically, put the, put the path directly through?
Yeah, they want this, they want it straightened out.
Yeah, I can, I can elaborate on that a little bit, too, since I was at the meeting. Yeah, is the, it was basically over security concerns that the committee felt that, or the, yeah, the committee felt that the, since there was no straight view through the pathway, that it would be safer if it was straightened out.
That would take a huge chunk of their property. Private property.
Do you mean that the, that the entire path would be perfectly straight from 47th to 45th with no bend at all, or that the path itself wouldn't have that curviness in it on the south part?
That the path would be straight, so the easement would be, would be a straight shot from, from 47th to 45th.
Oh, so then there would be a little...
Leaving, it would leave some, you know, kind of portion of EBI's property that's free and clear without any easement, kind of orphaned to the, to the east.
That option was floated when the project was originally approved by the city council, and the city council rejected that idea in defer, you know, in favor of a path that's just along the west, eastern 20 feet of the property, reflecting the bend in the property line. I think EBI convinced the council that that would leave them with a remnant parcel that would be somewhat unusable.
So, is there any kind of direction or clarification on what would comprise, what would it take to establish a security concern?
It could be, well, there is no direction on that. It would, yeah. And the council did not discuss that at that meeting either, when they proposed this condition.
I think it would just have to be sufficient to convince the city council that there was a problem.
So, the condition is worded in such a way that gates can be required if there is a security concern, is that correct?
Yes.
So, who may, who would make that determination of a security concern?
The city council.
Okay. So, this would have to go, so in order to add the gates, it would have to go back to the council for their approval?
That is correct, and it would not come to the commission.
Just the gates.
Just the gates, yes. So, the design is not going to go to the council for approval?
Correct, right.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Staff? Thank you, Maru. Does the applicant wish to come forward and speak?
Good evening, commission, council. My name's John Horsh, I serve on the board of trustees at Esquela Bilingüe Internacional. It's nice to see you again. I, it was nicer when we brought kids we got earlier on the agenda, so we're going to take that under advisement for future hearings. Just have a quick, oops, not that, or that, or that. Thought it was here somewhere, sorry. Thank you. I really can't see.
Press F5.
Thank you. There we go, great. I know that you're all very familiar with EBI, and it's late, and I don't want to take a lot of time, but just to refresh who we are and why we're here, an independent school is a mission-driven school, and so our mission is critical to everything we do. The mission of EBI is to provide an excellent Spanish, English, bilingual education based on the highest international academic standards, in an environment that thrives on diversity, fosters global citizenship, and develops the character necessary to recognize that cultural uniqueness is the touchstone of our common humanity. Maru touched on the highlights of the pedestrian path. As you know, our conditional use permit requires us to develop and maintain this path. The construction is required to be completed prior to our occupancy of the entire building at 4550, which we currently anticipate to be in the neighborhood of 2016. And as part, in preparation for tonight, as you well know, we've undergone a very extensive planning and design process. It included a community meeting, it's included further discussions with neighbors and our own design team, and it included the study session in front of you earlier this year... this year. Just to recap, the considerations that we wanted to undertake in the design of this path, I think, as it relates to security, I listed safety number one. We are a school, we have kids here, we are a neighbor in the neighborhood, and so I think security is something that's very important to us, and designing a space that can be safe is critical for us. We also want it to be a functional and attractive space that serves both the community and the school, that it has a strong connection to the community, and also to EBI. We feel like that serves both to integrate the school into the community and also hits on the first point of safety, that it, it feels like a occupied and engaged space, and integrating with EBI and the community in that way. Also, sustainability is a core value at EBI. We are a certified green business, and the plantings and landscape design certainly reflect that, that mission and value. So Maru touched on the path design. Jeffrey Miller is here, he's our landscape architect for Miller &amp; Company. I'm gonna let him talk a little bit about the modifications that we've made to the design, since we appeared before you for the study session, and answer any questions.
Hi there, I'm Jeff Miller. Nice to see you again. Hi. So from the last meeting, this is what's happened. We've changed the path material from decomposed granite to asphalt at a request to cut down on any dust that could happen in the neighborhood. We've added pedestrian-only signage at either end of the path. We've added pet waste bag dispensers and trash containers. We've added a convex mirror at the jog to increase the visibility. We've increased the size of the tree wells. You'll note their size on the plans. And we'll further consult with a city arborist as we go ahead as to the appropriate size for those tree wells. We've straightened the path as much as possible in the lower 45th side. We've, wanna maintain a little bit of a jog there, so that we can get a, a, a design of the trees that don't overhang the, the neighbors' properties. We're planting the smaller trees against the wall side of the property, and the larger trees on the EBI, EBI's side. And those are really the changes that have taken place. We've, we've kind of identified the plant materials a little more in this plan from what you saw in the past. So we're actually pretty happy with the plan as it is, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the developments of the plan.
So if gates were to be required, would, then the school would be able to close off the north end of the parking lot entirely? Is that how it would work?
Yeah, because there's a fence all the way along 47th Street.
Understanding the, the obvious challenges of, of straightening the, the path completely, I, I did suggest to the applicant a, kind of a scenario in where, in which the, the pathway would become kind of a, it would be kind of on a median in the, in the parking area, that might allow it, you know, might allow it to be straight. And I was just curious, have you explored that option any further?
Uh, we didn't really explore that option. This is the first I've heard of that, but I think part of, you know, what, I, I, I think the issue becomes the resultant property to the east. And does that have any use for EBI in the future as they look to, you know, building out the school property? So I think that, that nobody within the EBI community would look kindly on giving up any more of the property. Perhaps the property owner to the, on the north side could give up 20 feet of their property, and we could straighten the path directly through that way. I mean, we, we didn't really explore anything else, because this was the direction that we were provided to make the path in. This was the area where the path was gonna go.
That issue's been dealt with by the city council.
Yeah, I, I was just looking at other, you know, other scenarios, and I, you know, in just roughly sketching something out, I was, you know, I couldn't make sure that it worked, but I was curious if they had explored it more.
I guess, could I also add, it's probably, you're probably gonna say the same thing, but had you talked at all about kind of taking the corner slightly off of that prop, where the middle ginkgo is sort of, say, from the, that, the, the surces above to the, the surce, you know, in a line? Is that, for, for clearer view, you know, viewing through and more safety with the path?
Well, it's, it's an open fence, so you do have view through it now.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's an open fence. I, I really think it's just a matter of this was the area where the bike path was supposed to go, and so we didn't investigate...
Didn't even, okay.
Other areas.
All right. Are there any other questions? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We were hoping to get some clarification from staff on one of the conditions that was in the staff report specifically related to the seismic safety of the wall. We will be making a change not to the, well, to, we, the path plan proposes a, removing a section of the wall on the, as it turns the corner on 45th Street. And we would expect that we would need to make sure that we were not in any way weakening the structure of the overall wall and make, take any steps to mitigate that. The way the condition reads, it implies that perhaps a full seismic exploration of the wall and bringing up to current code might be implied, and that we wanted to make sure that isn't what...
That isn't...
Isn't a, well, that we...
Yeah.
We would have a problem with that condition.
We wanna make sure that this wall that's next to a public path isn't gonna fall down on people if there's an earthquake.
Whose property is the wall now?
I assume it's EBI's.
The 45th Street wall or the 47th Street wall?
It's...
Well, there's actually two different, two separate walls.
I think is the one more in question, but I'm sure all, both of them.
You think they're both?
This is Margaret Salem, who's the Facilities Project Manager for EBI.
So I chatted with both our structural engineer and our design firm that's doing this work, and they both agreed that the way that the clarification is written is actually not the way it would work, that as, if there were a seismic concern, it would have to be on the side of the city to show that the seismic work was needed. So the city would need to engage in the process to show that there was seismic work needed, that our work would include making sure that the wall remained in the same condition it is. And the proposal right now is for where we remove the access point on the south, a portion of the south extent of the wall. There's a brace frame being installed in that location, so that the wall continues to act structurally in the same fashion it does now. But that the way that the word, the wording is that it's actually not allowable that way. That's, that's the, our two design consultants' opinion from their experience with working with the building department.
So, so did you have a...
Yeah.
I would suggest that, you know, you're asking for approval of a design permit, and the permits are gonna suggest that you need to take care of that, that aspect to make sure that the wall is safe. And the city, it's not the city's responsibility to make sure that your private property is in fact safe. So we're not inclined to revise the permit on that on the basis of what your engineers said.
I think part of our feeling is that the seismic, the wall's an existing structure. We're not proposing changes to the wall, and, and as such, undertaking a full seismic review and any seismic strengthening would be very expensive for the school to endeavor to, to do, and is not, in our opinion, consistent with the initial, the initial condition under which we're developing the path.
I guess our, our concern is the inconsistency with what the building department says on this point and the language in the, in the condition. Our, the estimate that we have from our engineer is if, if we were going to do a study and strengthening of the type he might envision, we're talking about, about $50,000. And if there's a concern in this area, you know, we would of course engage with the city to take on that, but that is a $50,000 add that we did not anticipate. What we anticipated was that the wall would be maintained in its current state with the braced frame, allowing it to continue to act in the same structural way that it acts now.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions for the applicant?
Can I just ask you about the timing? If this is not required for another four years or so, why are you moving forward?
Sure, I'm happy to address that, yeah. We are, this is required as a, to be completed at the time that we complete our full build-out of the building. We are currently very close to submitting building permits for that project, and this is included as part of that. It's a full document set that includes all the improvements in the building, other site improvements that the city's requiring related to wastewater, not wastewater, but stormwater. And so, our intention is to, to, to present this as part of that as well. Having to go back later and, and resubmit separately for this would be, would incur significant additional design resources from the school as well as time. So that, that's why we're moving forward with this now. I mean, it, it feels far in advance in the sense that it won't be completed until 2016, but the work is, I mean, the work's actually, well, it's here. So it's, it's work, it's rolling.
Chair Kummerly?
Yes.
Just to clarify one point. The Planning Commission held a study session on this path on May 24th, as you may recall. In that study session staff report, which was, what, four months ago? It says, "The seismic stability of the existing concrete block wall along the eastern property line should be checked. It may need to be upgraded or replaced. Buildings should be consulted about how to do this. It was noted that the wall wraps around onto the 45th Street edge at the southern end, and that part of it will have to be removed." So that was four months ago. I don't know if EBI has consulted with the building division about that or not.
I can speak to that. We propose to submit our building permit documents on the 5th of October, that's next week. So we're almost complete. Our engineer has evaluated the wall. I mean, he's been on the site to evaluate it, he's done his analysis on it, and determined that the, the wall is, is, is structurally sound, and that this would allow it to continue to act in the same fashion that it's acting now. A seismic evaluation is, and/or seismic upgrade to bring it to current code is very different than assessing the wall in its current condition and allowing it to act in its current condition. The braced frame, he tells me, is up to current code, but the fact that the city asked us to study the question led us to have our engineer go out and take a look and study the situation. But seismic upgrading and seismic study on the entire wall is not something that we are contemplating.
Yeah, the, the condition doesn't ask for seismic upgrade. It just says, "Provide documentation that verifies the adequacy of the seismic stability of the wall." So if your engineer's comfortable with the seismic stability of the wall, and will put his stamp on something that confirms that, and the building official accepts that, then I'd say we're done.
Okay, great. Are there any other questions of the applicant? This is a public hearing, so I'd like to open, if there's anyone that wishes to comment, please come forward. You have three minutes.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to say that there is a need for this pedestrian pathway during the daytime. It'll be a great alternative to walking on San Pablo Avenue away from the noise and pollution of the daily 42,000 cars driven on it. The new pathway will also serve as a much-needed, safer route for Triangle Neighborhood children to go to school when the new Emeryville Center of Community Life is built. On the other hand, there is no need for this pathway to be open at night. During, during the pathway study session last May, Sergeant Dower of the Emeryville Police Department stated that the safest option for this pathway would be for it to be gated and closed at night. He also stated that he did not think the parking area should be open to the pathway. These are professional, well-thought-out recommendations of our police department, and should not be dismissed. As you decide about gates and the hours of operation for this pathway, I'd like you to think about Watergate Boardwalk as an example. It used to be open at night, but due to their own security problems, they now lock it up. And this is in a safe area, only a block away from the police station. Also, I, I think about the reasons why community gardens are fenced, fenced in and locked at night. You are in charge of approving the design for this pathway, and if you do not include safety and crime prevention in its design, you will not have done your job. The, the people who live around this school already have to deal with the noise and additional traffic EBI creates during the daytime. And now for phase three, the safety of our neighborhood is in jeopardy. Again, I'd like to remind you, Sergeant Dower has already stated that this pathway is a security concern without gates. The right thing to do for our neighborhood would be to approve this new pathway with the condition that EBI installs the gates on each entrance of the path and require that they be locked at night. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Please come forward. And please sign in after you've spoken.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, I'm John Tan, and I've been a property owner in Emeryville since the year 2000, when I purchased the lot to EBI. My family, I have a wife and three children, has lived at 1074A, 45th Street since 2004. Our home is directly adjacent to the pedestrian pathway that will be an imminent threat and serious safety concern when it is constructed without gates at lock at night. Since the time we learned of the pathway, my wife Kyrie Tan and I have gone to great lengths to find alternatives to make the pathway safer, including filing an appeal, participating in a community meeting with EBI on the 16th of April, and the Planning Commission Study Session on May 24th. Additionally, we've been in contact with EBI over the past few months about installing gates for safety purposes. Although our contact with EBI has been generally productive, unfortunately, at this time, EBI's moving forward with, out the design, without the design of the gates due to their conditional use permit, which contains language saying that the gates are not required until security becomes a problem in the future. Well, okay. Having the pathway open at all hours of the night will dramatically increase the likelihood of danger and exposure, dangerous exposure of my family and my tenants, whom also, whom also have children to crime and illegal activity. My children age seven and eight, and our tenants' children have their bedrooms directly on the other side of the wall for the proposed pathway. The layout, layout of the pathway area, the layout of the path includes areas hidden from street view that would invite loitering, provide cover for illegal activity, escape routes, and create discomfort for legitimate pedestrians after dark. Given the nature of the safety issues that will develop on the pathway without gate scenarios, I am strongly discouraging the Planning Commission from taking a wait-and-see approach in asking the city council, asking that the city council amend the in-the-future position, provisions. This provision of the conditional use permit should and can be amended to require security, security gates on the path today. I'm almost done. There are several other technical, legal, financial, and community issues involved in this proposal. I have provided you with a letter detailing these other points. However, it is the safety issues that concern me, my family, and my... However, it is the safety issues that concern me, my family, and my neighbors the most and I ask you to, I ask you, I ask that you consider this in your deliberations. I thank you for your time and attention and I trust that you'll do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I brought my own timer. It's a habit. Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for hearing me tonight. I'm Kyrie Tan and I live at 1074A 45th Street. You just heard from my husband, John Tan. Our house flanks the southern half of the pathway being voted on tonight. If the pathway is allowed to be open at night, the safety of my family, my tenants, and their children will be compromised. My kids' bedroom are within 15 feet of the pathway and strangers will be walking past their bedrooms at all hours of the night, people who have no legitimate reason for being there. While EBI is responsible for the construction and the maintenance of the pathway, I feel that very strongly that it's the city who's responsible for the safety of the people in our community and their well-being. The pathway without gates is not going to be safe at night because the, the design as it is now does not provide for adequate security to protect, to protect the public who will use it. As John said, a pathway without gates will invite loitering, illegal activity, and it will threaten the safety of legitimate pedestrians who use it after dark. A pathway with lockable gates at night is supported by the police department, as Eric alluded to, and that was stated at the study session and should be document, documented in the staff report. A pathway without gates is a crime scene waiting to happen. It simply is. If the gates are a money issue for EBI, then I feel that the city, as their responsibility for the safety of the public, consider subsidizing the cost of the gates. Let's not let this be an issue about money when the lives of our tenants, our community, and children are at stake. Our safety will be exponentially compromised if the wall gets replaced with a chain link or wrought iron fence. There definitely needs to be some clarity about what's going to happen with that concrete wall if it's not seismically safe, because that's the only thing right now that separates us from the pathway. If it gets replaced with a chain link or a wrought iron fence, we will basically be sitting ducks day and night. And I'd like to point out that currently there is no concrete provisions in their cup about what type of replacement wall, whether it's an in-kind replacement. You know, what, it's not stipulated at this point. That makes me feel very uncomfortable. Another wall, not a fence, needs to be built to buffer us from the path if it goes through. Security is going to be a problem in the future, so why wait until later to do something about it? Do something now. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, the public comment is, period is closed and we will deliberate. Does anyone have any thoughts about gates versus no gates?
Gates now or gates later is the issue.
I don't think that's an issue at all.
No.
Yeah, I think, it's my understanding that the, only the council can amend that condition.
That, that, okay, that is true.
We, we can't require the gates.
Well, let's clarify that. The council can't even amend that condition.
No, we've made that condition.
This is a vested permit and the only way to amend the conditions on this part of the city would be to go through the same kind of revocation modification process that we're going through with art.com. Yeah, and there's no basis for that. The applicant could voluntarily apply to modify their conditions, but we can't require them to.
But the condition is written in such a way that the council could impose the gates in the future if they deemed there was a safety concern.
Absolutely, after the path is built, yes.
So we don't?
So, my thoughts on this are, I, I don't like the path, the way it's designed. I totally agree with the B-PAC that it needs to be straight shot across so you can see through it. Even in the daytime, I don't like the, the design as it is and I think that's really unfortunate because I think EBI has gotten some really mixed signals about, "We want your path," but we, we want gates, we don't want gates. There's a lot of stuff going on here. We, we want the, the path along the eastern boundary, but that doesn't really work. And I feel in a really bad spot. I don't see a solution here, but I cannot support this path as it, as it is designed right now.
Well, I think we've gone through this a number of times and everybody has their own disagreements about it, but this is a compromise and the gates are the big issue. And also, I was curious, it said pedestrian only, so that presume means no bicycles?
That's correct.
And that's been accepted by everyone, I assume.
Well, it's shown in the general plan as a pedestrian path.
Pedestrian only.
It's not supposed to be a bicycle path.
I think now that it's asphalt, I think that's going to be harder to enforce, but that's, you know.
Well, I'd move approval as the staff has recommended.
I'll second.
Does anyone have any other comments before we?
I, I do still have the safety concerns as well, just because of the configuration of the path. I think it's a lovely, a lovely path if it were open on the west side and it would continue to be visible, but there's going to be a building there, it's going to be more enclosed, and I think it's really problematic. I would rather see improvements to San Pablo Avenue and make that a place. I mean, really, looking back at it, when this was originally considered, there were homes that were along there that would be providing some 24-hour presence along this path, but now it becomes a place where there isn't a 24-hour presence and it really is connecting, it's another one of these paths that's not connecting a destination to another destination. I mean, the people that are in the Triangle Neighborhood, if they're going towards San Pablo Avenue, they're not going to cut across there. There might be some people that might use it to get to the Emeryville Senior Center from a couple of blocks on the north side, but I don't see that there's going to be actually a whole lot of demand for that path. So, I love the landscaping along the backside of the property, but I, I really have the safety concerns, so I have, I have a problem supporting it.
Are you willing to entertain a substitute motion?
Well, are we, it sounds like, excuse me. What we're talking about, you're, you're talking about the mere existence of the path and others are talking about the configuration of the path. And that path, its location, its configuration is already part of a, one, it's in the general plan and two, it's also already part of approved site plan for this project that was approved by the council. And so, all we're really talking about is the design, the details of the design of the path, not whether it's going to exist here or whether it's going to be in a different configuration. The configuration is where it is and, and, you know, and that's, that's really just sort of the brunt of it and really what you're being asked to do is approve the design of it, so.
Please come up.
Recognizing that there are inherent safety challenges with the path, but also recognizing that pedestrian safety is, is an important, is important in that area for our students, for families, for students traveling to Emory Unified Schools in the area, EBI would, would entertain a modification to our, our project that provided some substitute for the path, whether it be a financial contribution to pedestrian improvements on San Pablo or, or other such item. This is, so obviously, we wouldn't be able to hit every goal of the existence of the path, but, but we would be open to, to that, which I think would potentially be okay.
Well, that was a condition that was done on the path that was to be between, between the Artist Co-op and the Pete's plant. And I understand that they did deed the property to the city and gave them the funds to build the path in the future, if it was needed, but it was primarily the residents of the Artist Co-op that objected to the path going in at all. Wasn't that the case?
I don't recall that they objected to it. I, frankly, that was quite a while ago. I can't remember exactly why.
Well, they were, because they have a problem now with people jumping over their wall, apparently. And there would have been nobody else to object.
Well, just let me say, the, the, that's a possible option here, that is for EBI to deed this 20-foot strip to the city and give the city whatever amount of money it would cost to design and build the path and then have the city do it at some future date. But the conditions of approval that were approved by the city council require this path to be built prior to the, I believe it's the certificate of occupancy for the last phase of the project. So that would require going back to the city council and getting an amendment to the conditions, which again, the city cannot unilaterally impose. The applicant would have to request that. Similarly, if the proposal were to eliminate the path altogether in lieu of something else, that also would have to be requested as a modification to the permit by the applicant and approved by the city council. And both, in both situations, I believe that would have to be, first be heard by the planning commission and make a recommendation to the council. Also, it would, if we're going to eliminate this path entirely from any future consideration, we should amend the general plan to delete it from the general plan and also the pedestrian and bicycle plan to delete it from the pedestrian and bicycle plan.
I, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't think we would want to do those things. I mean, it's a, it's a very, it's a, it's a, what I, what do I want to say? It, it's a very obviously missing link in the Triangle Neighborhood. I mean, it's, 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 you know, it, as you, you can't transverse the triangle from, from north to south without this path, so.
Well, the path should be further north, at further east, of course, but more in the center of the block than at one edge, which it is.
Ideally, yeah. I mean, but, you know, I think we, we work with what we can do and I, you know, I, I always regret that I can't get from 45th to 47th when I walk through the triangle. So I think it's a, it's a very noticeable missing connection.
So just for clarification, Michael, if, so we, because this has already been approved by the council, under these terms, we're not really up for discussion about whether there's fences or not?
Correct.
That's correct. So what, gates, gates, whether there's a gate or not.
Not, not right now.
Okay.
So the motion has been made and has been seconded.
Nope.
Commissioner Cardozo made the motion, Commissioner Moss seconded it.
Could I, I just want to add, I, I think that the, I mean, I, I definitely understand that there are safety concerns, but, you know, this, this path has been, this, this kind of area for the path has been established by the city council's approval of the project. And I, I think, given, with what the applicant's been given, I think they've done a good job with addressing those safety concerns. I mean, with adding this mirror, with, you know, I mean, just, just their, their design philosophy to plant trees that don't, you know, and not lower landscaping that obstructs the view, you know, I mean, they've tried, they've tried to keep it as, you know, as much of a view through it as possible. I think it is, you know, the, maybe the, the shape of it is, is regrettable, maybe the, you know, the, the, you know, maybe, maybe the, some of the bigger picture issues are, are regrettable, but I think with, with what they've been given with, you know, saying, you know, if, by saying, you know, you, you have a, however wide this thing is, whatever, you have, you've been given a 20, 20-foot wide zigzagging piece of land, design it. I think they've done a pretty good job with the design.
Are there any other, further comments about the design where we have a vote? I, I also agree that I, I'm concerned about the safety issues and at the same time, it is not what is before us. So, I am, it is, it is, and I do believe that Gail brought up a very good point where there was going to be a, you know, a housing development there and now there is not. There's a school that is vacant at night for the most part and that...
Well, the applicant, the, the adjacent neighbors that are not happy with the lack of gates can appeal this decision to the city council, which could then decide to put in gates, couldn't they?
Only if the applicant requests a modification to the conditions of approval.
Right, as, as the way it's stated right now, the, the pathway has to get built first and then the council has to make a determination that there's a safety concern to require the gates.
But the, the neighbors could appeal our decision of approving this tonight.
But the council can't require the gates before the pathway is built because of the way they, because the way they proved the condition.
That's right.
It would be a wasted appeal.
Is there any more ability for public comment?
Please come up. I need to, actually, I need to make a motion to, or I need to, yes, make a motion to reopen the public comment. Do I have a second?
You can do that yourself.
Do that without, okay. Please come up then, we'll reopen it.
Living right next door to there for the last 12 years and seeing what goes on on the other side even without the path is frightening and we have a bird's eye view. We don't mind the path, we don't mind the school, but living on the other side of that wall and having unscrupulous people possibly come down through there, being chased by the police, I talked to five different police officers that said that if that thing was left open at night, that it was unquestionably a bad decision. They said their eyes were rolling in their heads, that why would you leave a, a pathway open at, in the middle of the night, for what reason? It is a huge security thing. We are so frightened to death if someone should be chased by the police or just simply decides to scale this, this wall and breaks into our house while we're in there and my kids, my son's not here, I have three kids, he went off to college. It puts the fear of God in us. And the fact that, 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 that these, all these guidelines are completely sidestepping the simplicity of putting gates in at night is mind-boggling to me. And all these rules and all these different types of laws and things are so brutal that they have not even mentioned the fact that we have lived there for years and now we're being told we can't even appeal it. I feel unbelievably offended that our, our existence as, as residents of Emeryville, and I am in full support of everything that happens and I didn't even object at all to the school and even John wants the gates, he just doesn't want to pay for them. It's all about money here and, and my kids, I'm telling you, if anything happens, it is going to be really regretful and I, I really feel that this process, that something's wrong with it. That's all I can say. I really hope you think twice here, my God, with gates.
Thank you. John, could you come up for a moment? In light of the fact that you're not going to need to deal with the, the earthquake structural engineering of that wall, would you be willing to put in two gates?
The issue for us really comes down to cost and I hate to be callous about that. It's a, it's an exceptional cost, it's over $50,000. We're assuming that the gates that you're talking about would need to be open on weekends and, and in the summer, I assume, when the school's not in session. So it's not a, not something that could be manual, that the school can manually address. So it would need to be automated, which has an additional installation cost, which our contractors and landscape architects estimate to be... contractors and landscape architects estimate to be around $50,000. And then on top of that is the added maintenance of, of, of those gates. I mean, and I, now we're talking about enrolling an entire classroom full of kids to pay, to put the gates in and that goes away from the mission of the school and it's, I mean, I, I'm not trying to be callous and, and we care very much about the safety of our neighbors and, and are loath to create something that would potentially cause a problem, but.
However, if there was a problem, you would be required potentially.
Well, we accept that. We accept that. We, you know, our hope is that our presence and increased presence in the neighborhood will have a positive effect and that, that we're not going to encounter those kinds of things. We accept that eventually we may need to do that if there are, if there are security concerns. That's the condition that we agreed to when we, when we moved forward with this. But, but we're just not, we're just, we can't, I mean, it's just, it's not a want to, we just can't. We just don't have the money to do it.
Thank you.
Can we vote on it then?
We have, we still have that motion up.
You have a motion on the floor to approve the staff recommendation. Which is to approve the design as submitted with some conditions.
And do we have a second?
Yes. Commissioner Cardoza made the motion and Commissioner Moss seconded it.
Have a vote.
All right. Commissioner Donaldson.
I'm, having heard the comments of the police department the last time around, I'm going to abstain because I don't feel comfortable with the safety issue and I don't feel that I have the option of say, it's not the design per se, it's the configuration and the, the other stuff that, that I just don't feel comfortable with.
Commissioner Moss?
Aye.
Commissioner Sherman?
No.
Vice Chair Cardoza?
Aye.
And Chair Comerly?
No.
All right. We have two ayes, two noes, one abstention. So that abstention doesn't count. So it's a tie vote, which means the motion fails. So the design is not approved. That could be appealed to the city council, right? Yeah. This is an action of the planning commission on this decision and the decision was against doing it and that decision may be appealed to the city council.
Can we, can we at least give the applicant some direction on what, I mean, I, I would hate for them to go away not, not knowing what, what concerns to address or what, yeah.
Well, I'd like to see it appealed to the city council because I think there's some council decisions that need to be made on this. Because I, I almost feel like they've been put in an impossible situation and so have we.
I'm not sure what further decisions the council can make. They can't modify the conditions unilaterally. So any movement would have to be on EBI's part.
So if we had approved it now with putting the gates in immediately?
I don't think.
You said we couldn't do that either.
As, as I see it, the, we're, the council has required that this pathway be built. We're supposed to approve the design of it. We just denied the design of it, but the applicant still has to build it. So I think, I think, I mean, I would just like to give the applicant some direction as to what to do to, to come back with a design that, that would, you know, that would, that would be more favorable.
You mean, come back to the commission?
Yeah.
Well, they have to first go to the city council.
Well, not necessarily.
But the, I mean, because I, as, as I understand, like, there's, there's nothing that the council can do to waive this requirement of building the path. So the, the requirement of building the path stands. The applicant has to build a path and we have to approve the design of the path.
Right.
So.
But we're not approving the design of the path therefore?
The council could approve the design on appeal if, if you can get three votes.
This isn't the cheapest design that exists. We really designed this because we wanted this to be a resource for the community and to tie the school to the community. There are less well-designed, examples of less well-designed pedestrian paths in Emeryville. You know, we, I can't speak unilaterally. We have a board and, and, but we could potentially come back with a, you know, a six-foot asphalt path with hydro seeded grass on both sides and capture the savings and put them into gates. We don't feel like that, we feel like that's, we're sort of, now we've gotten to something that doesn't really serve the school. It doesn't serve the community as well as, as it could. But that's certainly something that we could potentially explore.
If there was a way to?
This is a 200, approximately, we haven't priced it. We don't have construction documents, but it's approximately.
We have 50% pricing on it.
It's approximately a $200,000 path to build for a school, you know, that has a mission that is about educating kids. And, you know, I think we're happy to comply with the requirements that were placed on it. We, you know, we accepted those conditions when we moved forward with our project last spring. But at a certain point, it becomes something that, you know, we just, it's not possible for us to, you know, I think some of the suggestions about straightening the path, it's very difficult to argue with the logic of straightening the path. That would be really great, except that it significantly impairs our ability to make use of the property in the future. So some of them are just, you know, they're, they, they seem like they should be easy, but they're just not because of the, and again, it, it's a mission-driven school. You know, we are, you know, we're trying to educate kids here and that's, that's, and I think, you know, the somewhat unfortunate thing of continuing this for us is that it impacts our construction schedule now for, for our project and, and it impacts, you know, we're.
We, we feel like we've worked in this process for five or six months specifically on the path and 16 months since we got the original approval. And we have kids who are enrolled, who are in need of classrooms. And as the person who keeps this construction schedule, we got to start and, and we can't, and, and to, as you know, going into the building department with drawings that aren't complete is, is really expensive and it's challenging for the city as well as for us. You end up chasing those sorts of things through the process. So we're feeling a hardship here and a worry about our ability to have kids in classrooms for the fall.
Charlie?
Yes?
What are our options going forward since it has been, it is a, it has been a tie? The motion failed basically?
I mean, you're done, basically. You did what you were asked to do, which is to take a vote and you took the vote. I would say the ball is.
Terms of recommending.
Oh. Well, you can provide them with some direction. I'm not sure what that direction would be, but I think the ball is in EBI's court to either come up with a different design and request you to reconsider based on a different design or to appeal this decision to the city council. Those are the options I see, unless I'm missing something.
Well, it sounds like the big issue is the security gate. And we can't touch that. We've been told. And.
I guess direction would be to appeal to city council and I do apologize that it is extending.
Well, I mean, you could, somebody could make a motion to reconsider your motion if any of the commissioners were inclined to change their votes, but that doesn't sound likely. The two who voted against.
Well, one of them would have to.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Well, no, it has to be someone who voted, no, would have to make a motion to reconsider. And then that motion would have to pass and then you'd have to vote again and see if it comes out any different. But I don't see any reason why it would unless some, any of you is inclined to change your mind.
I mean, can we at least reconsider it to discuss it a little more?
Is that possible?
Sure.
Yes.
Well.
Well, it's what we can or cannot approve that.
If you want to discuss it some more, you can always discuss it. You don't need to vote to do that.
Can you think of any magical solutions?
Well, I'm struggling.
You're, you're on a roll tonight.
I'm struggling too. I mean, I'm just, I, you know, I'm, I'm a little frustrated because we're, you know, we're being asked to design a box. And, you know, I think, I mean, I think the, I think on its face, the merits of the path are valid. I mean, I think they're good. I think it's a necessary connection. You know, whether, whether or not it should be gated or locked at night or straight or, I mean, those, those aren't really issues that we unfortunately have the ability to discuss tonight because of the way, the, the way it was approved. And so, you know, given, given that I, you know, that I appreciate the value of it, I mean, I, I personally am going to use this pathway all the time because I walk through the Triangle neighborhood all the time and this is, it always annoys me that I can't get from, from 45th to 47th. And so, you know, I appreciate the value of it, you know, I, I wish we had the ability to approve gates because I think that would solve a lot of our problems. But we don't and the city council still does. I mean, they, they can still, you know, if we, if we approve the design and this, and this, and this pathway gets built, I mean, they could, they could immediately decide that there was security concerns and require the gates. I mean, they, they could do that, you know, within a week of it opening as, I mean, unless, unless the staff is going to tell me otherwise, they could do that. And, you know, that would solve some problems. So I don't, you know, I have no idea if the council's interested in, in gates or, or, you know, what their approach is going to be. I just, you know, I feel like we have a responsibility to approve this box that we've been given. And I think with what they've been given, they've, they've done, you know, they've done the best job that they could do essentially.
I agree. And the council has given direction to proceed without the gates. That was their direction. So.
So if they, if, if the neighbors' appeal, our decision to the city council, couldn't the city council then change their prior decision?
No. To reiterate, the conditions of approval are now vested. The project is vested. It's got a certificate of occupancy. The only way the conditions of approval can be modified are either through a revocation and modification process, which requires the whole evidentiary hearing thing that there's a nuisance, which in this case would be hard to show. Or the applicant has to voluntarily apply to modify their conditions. The city council cannot unilaterally change the conditions.
It disturbs me that the school has done a lot to make this pedestrian walkway very attractive and useful. And at the same time that there are serious safety considerations at night especially.
Are, is, let me say this, is, are there anything that, so it seems like there are some, there are some concerns about safety. Is, is there anything on the table? Are there any solutions that would serve to allay any of those fears? I mean, because we, you know, we do have the ability to affect the design of the path. So we could add some conditions of approval to, you know, require some other things that might.
Or landscaping or something.
Yeah. As, as far, I mean, as far as the design, I mean, if, you know, if we wanted another mirror, we wanted a larger mirror, we wanted, I mean, I, I, you know, I'm just thinking out loud here, but, and I'm just putting this out there.
But the gates are not an issue that we can.
The gates are not something that we can approve.
I think they've done an excellent job with designing and I'm, in the space allotted. I don't know how.
Yeah.
It could cost, you know, any other, any ideas?
I guess the only thing that I can think of is simplifying the design and putting the gates and going low, low budget on the, the design of the path and put the money into the safety.
That would be an alternative. Would be an alternative. Value engineering.
A low, I'm sorry, a low-budget design for the path and then put the money into the gates?
Right.
Well, I think that's what Mr. Horst suggested, but I'm not sure that's what anybody wants.
That's the only option I can think of, that, that I can control.
What about additional lighting?
It's, it's a blind corner. It's like access to people's property next door.
You have a potential solution?
Come, come up. Yes, we'll open the public hearing.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
Well, I've been a builder for about 35 years and there could be some solutions that would save. There could be some solutions that would save some, some money by installing a gate at, at both ends or one in the middle and leaving the parking lot on the north side open as part of that fence. That 20-foot gate that slides, there could be a modification there. So it closed off that area that passes, that's going to let people flow through there. That's one option. And then, of course, if they didn't have to demolish the whole wall and they were just to cut a hole in it and put, and get a design, by keeping people out of that area at night, it would solve several problems that may save money in the long run for EBI in terms of just people sleeping in there and littering and doing all kinds of things. Again, there seems to be ways to, a lot of ways to, to get this done and keep the same design. I think the design is fine. It's just the fact that we are so subjected to people going through there and people have come over the wall plenty of times. And in the middle of the night when we're sleeping, I gotta tell you, it puts the fear of God in me. If they cut a hole in the wall at the end, they would save a lot of money in demolition. They could get some alternative pricing and I think it's reasonable to attempt, to, to look at it that way, that it might weigh itself out in the end if that is closed off. But do you guys really want it open all night long anyway? Is there a reason for it? I'm just curious. Because it really freaks us out.
You need to speak into the microphone.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Sure. I was just trying to talk to, to John and his wife. Because in the meeting, John's wife inclined the gates were, were a good idea. But in any event, there's probably a lot of ways to analyze it if we give it time. That, that would be my, my hope. As a contractor, I've looked at things 100 ways to get, find the best, most economical solution for the best product for everybody. And, and thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Comerly, just to clarify, we've heard of several people comment about the demolition of this wall. There's no proposal to demolish this existing wall.
No. There's the end piece that was talked about.
Oh, yeah, there's the last, the piece that wraps onto 45th, 35th Street. That has to, that has to be demolished. But the wall along the eastern property line is not proposed to be demolished.
The public meeting's over.
I think she reopened it.
It's reopened.
Yes. And mine is just Ruth Major and commissioners. I just wanted to say one thing. It's distressing all around for everyone, including you. But there are a lot of grants out there for security that are connected to schools. So what I'm suggesting is if somebody could do some research in that area, there may be a way to pay for the gates through some grants because there's specific grants around security for schools. So it's just a suggestion.
Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to clarify one other thing about the gates. As Ms. Desai mentioned in her presentation, the conditions of approval explicitly say that EBI will be responsible for both installing, maintaining and operating, i.e. opening and closing the gates. City staff is not going to do that. The police are not going to do that. It's going to be EBI's responsibility to make sure the gates are open and closed whenever they need to be open and closed. And so any gate design would have to take that into consideration.
Can I, I just want to add one more thing. So I, I just realized that I, I just kind of had this realization that, so we've kind of been discussing, you know, possibly, like, you know, the potential to kind of value engineer it, to. like, you know, the potential to kind of value engineer it, to get more, you know, to cut down the cost of the design to be able to save some money to add the gates. Um, you know, in, in that scenario, uh, the applicant would have to voluntarily do that, 'cause we can't require them to build the gates, so they would have to voluntarily do that and come back to us, but what we would get is a, is a, is a pathway that was designed more cheaply and gates. If we were to approve what they've, you know, something similar to what they've, uh, designed here, we would get a well-designed pathway, and if there are security concerns, the council can make that determination and, and require them to build the gates. So, we'd be getting a well-designed pathway and still be getting the gates if there are security concerns, and EBI would have to pay for the cost of those gates.
But that would be after some security issues had arisen.
I mean, what constitutes a concern, could security concern?
That's the council's discretion, so, you know, if, if they're, if they're inclined to make that finding very easily, then, then that's their, their decision.
Okay. Charlie, I have one other question.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, in the, in the, in the, in the possibility of becoming a flip-flopper, is it possible to retake a vote?
Absolutely, somebody who, uh, voted no would have to make the motion to reconsider, that motion would have to pass by three votes, I guess, and then you just vote again.
Okay. I would like to make a motion, as one of the no's, to reconsider this path and to approve it as designed, uh, I think-
I think those have to be separate motions.
You're just, you're just making a motion to reconsider the vote.
Make an motion to reconsider.
That's all you gotta do right now.
And, and I just wanted to add that I think what Sean was saying is, in the spirit of, of safety, that the council, in its ultimate wisdom and understanding budgets, will be able to determine what constitutes a safety issue.
And I think we can definitely voice our, I mean, I think we have voiced our concerns here to the council that we have concerns about safety, and, you know, and we, I think most of us would encourage them to, uh, you know, to be very, um, you know, what do I wanna say, to have, to have an eagle eye on this issue and, and be very, uh, ready to make that determination.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Ready to vote, this is just a vote on whether or not to reconsider your motion. Commissioner Donaldson?
Aye.
Commissioner Moss?
Aye.
Commissioner Sherman?
No.
Uh, Vice Chair Cardoza?
Aye.
Chair Comerly?
Aye.
Four ayes, one no, the motion is approved, so you may now reconsider this item.
Now, I'd like to reconsider this, this project as proposed, and move to approve it, with the condition, with no condition.
With the conditions established?
With the, with the understanding that city council will, in its, like I said, in its ultimate wisdom, will, uh, make sure that they have an eagle eye on it, and that security issues are closely watched, and a fence approved as soon as any sign of problems arise.
A gate, you mean, a gate?
A gate.
Gates.
That's right, put in gates, yes.
Right.
I mean, you're not modifying the, you, you can't modify the-
She's just stating.
-existing condition, but those are your sentiments.
Those are just my sentiments, I'm sorry.
Sentiments of the commission.
Excuse me, yes. Uh, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Are you ready to vote?
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Donaldson?
I'm still going to abstain, and I would just encourage that, um, if there's any way that the two of you can work together to come up with some other proposal, that would be wonderful.
Commissioner Moss?
Aye, and I, I echo Commissioner Donaldson's sentiments.
Commissioner Sherman?
No.
Commissioner Card, uh, Vice Chair Cardoza?
Uh, aye.
And Chair Comerly?
Aye, and I also would like to see a solution worked out, hopefully between all of you.
Three ayes, one no, one abstention, the path design is approved, and this decision may be appealed to the city council within fifteen days.
And I did just wanna say, I hope you realize how much all of us have struggled with this, because for a path that doesn't have safety concerns, it's a beautiful design, it would be lovely, but there's, there's some significant issues.
Well, we recognize that as well, and I think, you know, the fact we've invested many months and many hours of both volunteer and paid design time to, to try to address this as best we can, so.
Thank you all.
It's an empty floor.
Well, we have one more item on the agenda, is the tree study session, for street trees.
Okay, so this is a study session, the city council, uh, had the study session earlier in the year, and their recommendation was that the planning commission also benefit from the study session. So, the topics that are gonna be covered, myself and Molly are gonna tag-team here. Uh, so the first is the key regulations that affect the street trees, a little bit about tree inventory, planting and tree fund, uh, then Molly's gonna talk about tree selection, planting and protection, and then I will finish up with, uh, some policy direction that we are seeking from you regarding tree removal and replacement, as well as modifications to the urban forestry ordinance. Uh, what is a street tree, any tree in the public right of way and on land owned by the city. Uh, who maintains it, it lies with the property owners, except in areas owned, uh, medium-density residential, or RM. Uh, what happens when a sidewalk is damaged? It's the owners of commercial or industrial property are responsible for maintaining the sidewalks, abutting their lots, and in practice, the city has not had a program to request owners repair damaged sidewalks. Generally, a request for sidewalk improvement and/or repair is associated with building and/or planning permit. Uh, regarding tree planting and removal, uh, the planning commission approval is required to remove any street tree, uh, tree removal permit requires planting of replacement trees of equal and cumulative diameter of the tree removed, plus payment of replacement value fee, uh, fee of the tree removed, you, you heard a little bit about it in the first item. If the need for the street removal is not the fault of the owner, the ordinance allows the commission to waive the requirement, uh, to replace tree, or the payment of replacement value fee. Uh, tree inventory, planting, and tree fund, and this is stuck again, I'm not sure why it does this. All right, there you go. So, the Department of Public Works keeps a GIS-based inventory of all street trees, uh, the last time that the survey was done was in two thousand eight, where about thirty-eight hundred tree wells, uh, were in the city, of which six were vacant, six percent were vacant or occupied by stumps. Uh, since that survey, there have been several projects implemented that have installed new trees, these include, uh, the Park Avenue Beautification Project, uh, the Emery Park, and various private projects. Uh, the, uh, Public Works is in the process of updating this tree inventory in order to capture these recent changes, and, uh, this is sort of the map showing where the tree wells and, I think, the vacant tree wells and the stumps exist around the city.
That's from a couple of years ago, right?
Uh, this is two thousand eight, yeah. Uh, so how does tree planting occur in this, uh, city? The street trees are planted as part of private planning projects, the city may also install street trees, depending on availability of funds. Uh, in oh-eight or oh-nine, uh, there was a Triangle Neighborhood Tree Planting Project that was done. Uh, currently, the Public Works budget includes a line item of five thousand dollars each fiscal year to purchase and install new trees, and this would allow about thirty new street trees per year, uh, which is, you know, the cost of a hundred and fifty, uh, per a twenty-four-inch box tree, but this would not include planting in structural soil. Planting in structural soil would cost about twelve hundred to eight thousand per tree, depending on the size of the tree and the species of the tree. Uh, there is a UFO fund, uh, and a tree removal permit includes payment of replacement value fee for the street tree removed, and this is where that money goes in. Uh, the ordinance also allows collection of civil penalties if a person moves or damages street trees, uh, at the rate of three times, the replacement value fee, uh, plus cities' incurred appraisal costs, so these are the sources of, uh, the fund, uh, the existing balance is about forty-two thousand dollars. So, I'm gonna hand over to Molly, who's gonna give us a little bit about, uh, tree selection, planting, and protection.
Nice to be here, thank you. I'm okay, so I start off with this picture, because, um, this is a successful tree planting, um, trees are planted high, they were, um, the sites were dug out, they were mulched, um, watered correctly, protected, and I start this off because we know how to plant trees correctly now, we have all the information, um, and even though this is not, uh, this is not on, um, urban, the urban landscape, um, which has its own set of, um, issues, we know, we still know how to do that with the urban landscape too, so, um, all right, so this is what we're all gonna be talking about, what the vital information is. All right, so what is failure? This is failure, um, and we go around our streets, and we see, um, uplifted pavement, um, branches being hit by cars and ripped out, um, trees just not thriving, um, so, and when does failure occur, it occurs all the time, and we say it, it occurs in any one step of the planting process. Um, these are London plane trees, they were, um, not provided inadequate, um, soil, the, the trees were, were put in probably, um, holes big enough for the root ball, and the rest of the site wasn't dug out, and now they have anthrochinos pretty bad. So, yeah, so when does failure occur? Um, lack of understanding of the site conditions, um, knowledge of the plantings, of the species that you're gonna be planting, you know, if you go to the nursery and you pick out a tree that has girdling roots, um, that's a failure. Uh, lack of proper maintenance, that's, that includes, um, I'm sorry, that includes, um, structural, um, structural pruning, so, and, um, water and soil compaction are critical. All right, and also, I just wanna talk about, um, tree protection, you know, a lot of ti, most times when we try to protect trees during construction, um, it doesn't work, um, and it's really lack of, um, either adequate, um, protection measures, or the contractors is just not compliant, so this happens all the time. So, um, what we say is, when you plant a tree, you really need to go and look at the site, and find out the slight, site limitations, what is the wind and sun exposure, um, what is the above-ground, um, things, is, is there, um, um, power lines that are going to, you know, the tree's gonna have to be cut, is there, um, you know, blacktop that is going to lift, so you have to know all the above-ground limitations, and also the below-ground, like, what is, what is the soil like, what kind of texture does it have, is it clay, is it sand, um, you know, is it anaerobic, is it compaction? Um, all these things need to be decided, need to be addressed, and we need to figure out what the limitations are, and then after that, then we can choose a species right for the, the site, we can modify the site, whatever we need to do. So, um, special situations, planting in turf, um, you know, you need to plant the trees high, if you plant them too low, their water's gonna, um, fill in the hole, and the tree's gonna drown. Um, planting close to hardscape, we're gonna talk about different under-pavement treatments that we can, um, we can use to prevent that uplift of pavement, and also, if, um, the site analysis, um, understands that the soil is toxic, um, we might wanna change the soil, um, altogether, um, we're finding a lot of, um, heavy metals in soil, and if there's zinc or lead, the trees cannot physically pull up any, um, any water and nutrients or anything, so. Um, and then what we were talking about earlier, what size pot are you gonna be planting the tree? So, we say that large trees require an excess of two thousand cubic feet of rootable soil, um, medium trees fifteen hundred, small trees six hundred, and, um, we really wanna give them the most amount of soil possible, so if we're gonna plant a tree in a, you know, three-by-three space and not give it anything, then it's just gonna, um, it's gonna look like, um, it's just gonna be surviving, the average life of, of a street tree right now is about seven years, and that means, because a lot of trees actually die after they're planted, and you know what they look like, they're, um, they're just kinda scraggly, and, um, so, um, and soil volume also is limited by lack of oxygen, is, um, trees require oxygen for their roots, um, so anyway, this is, this is an example of limited soil volume, as you can see, these are, um, incense cedars, um, the two small trees on the left is where the medium kinda bottlenecked, and it's a good, good example of just, um, those, they were all planted at the same time, but those are obviously not as, um, as thriving, even though the other ones aren't very thriving either. Okay, so what, uh, tree roots need, okay, so, we know that trees cannot, roots cannot physically penetrate soil that's over eighty-five percent compacted, and under pavement, engineering requirements, um, really, um, make it so that the soil is ninety-five percent compacted, and tree roots just won't grow there. Um, so, chemistry, pH, salinity, all, that all, that all has to be, um, in line with tree roots, and oxygen, um, roots do not, um, take up anything if it's not being bonded by an oxygen molecule, so, roots cannot take up any water and nutrients or anything, the oxygen is needed to do that work, and if, um, there's no oxygen in the soil, um, because of soil compaction, or flooding, or, um, uh, the tree's not gonna thrive, so. And we know that, um, if a tree is, if it is the, um, extension of its, um, limbs, there are only about this much a year, um, then we know that's exactly what the, what the roots are doing too, so it's directly related. Um, so, methods to increase soil volume, Emeryville has done some of these, I don't know actually if, um, they have used a silver, silver cell, um, but this is just a way that you can put the pavement on top, so that there's, um, really, uh, rootable soil down in the bottom, um, but you have used structural soil, and, um, and this is just basically a mixture of rock and soil, about three parts rock to one part soil, and, um, and so it, it, it can be compacted down, and it forms a matrix where there's oxygen and, you know, and, um, and water filtration and everything within that. And then what we, what we say is, if you just put six inches of clean drain rock on top of that structural soil, um, roots will not wanna get up into that, because there's, it doesn't have any water or nutrient holding capacity at all, so roots will actually stay down in the structural soil. Um, also, um, you know, dig bigger sites, this was, uh, a picture taken from the Berkeley University median, um, where that site was dug, dug down five feet, and when we did site analysis the first time, we found that it was, uh, about a foot of really good soil, followed by compacted road base, followed by a compacted clay, and there was no way that those trees are gonna, were gonna grow, but, um, we, we, you know, somehow got it, um, down, so we dug that median out to five feet and amended it with compost, and those trees are looking really good, much better than, you know, most medium trees I see. Okay, so, and, and so if there could be one point that, um, that you can take back with you, is that, you know, there's always budget constraints and everything, and what we say is that, if you have, you know, a, a, a limited amount of money, um, you know, it's really better to plant fewer trees, but plant them correctly, rather than say, oh, we planted a hundred trees, you know, with this grant or with this money, and all those trees are, you know, either gonna die, or going to, um, never thrive, or in the future are gonna lift up the pavement, and so, um, their roots are gonna have to be cut, and then it just sends those trees down into a spiral of decline, so, we, we, we see all this from happening, so, we, we have the information, and, and, you know, we can do it, we just have to make educated, um, decisions about our tree planting. So then, this just talks about, um, this is more, um, we're not gonna go into that, um, and what, that I said before is, um, is that, you know, really- Um, and what, that I said before is, um, is that, you know, really you need to go to-